It is six thirty on Wednesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to call to order the Rockford Area Schools Board of Education Business Meeting, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is board roll. Call, man clerk.
Uh, Jenny Nealon.
Here.
Amy Edwards.
Here.
Eric Gordy.
Here.
Jessica Johnson.
Here.
Jamie Hillstrom.
Here.
Beth Prawka is absent.
Thank you very much. We do have forum of the board, and item number two is approval of the agenda that has been presented to you. I'd like a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's a motion on the floor. I'd like a second.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. There's a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
Post. Agenda carries. Item three is public comments. Looking to see, and we have no public comments this evening, thank you very much. Item four is the consent agenda. Hopefully you all had the opportunity to read your consent agenda as presented, and I would appreciate a motion for tonight's consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon. There's a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. There's a first and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Could I just mention that we are approving the EMR Master Agreement tonight, and just wanted to comment through negotiations that we had really a great negotiation with the EMR group, proud of our teachers in this district, and it was a very good process this year, really, really proud of them, so.
Excellent, and I would like to then echo the work that the board committee and the superintendent in office had done to help with that as well, so thank you so much. So there has been a first and a second with discussion. Any further? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Post. And Eric Gordy abstains. Item five, Superintendent Report. Dr. Idlehoover.
All right, thank you, Chair Gordy. Buckle up, but also please notice that I've had a cold and my voice is gonna sound like Peter Brady, so here we go. So the days have started to get longer as we're beginning to make our way to the end. Thank you very much. What has been a wonderfully mild winter.
Yeah, your microphone. There you go.
We set our sights on finishing two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four strong while also diligently planning for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year that will be here before we know it. Not wanting to steal the thunder from Rockford Middle School's Center for Environmental Studies Principal Mr. Warzekka, who was in attendance at the CNIOL, begin by sharing some recent happenings and celebrations from both Reams and Rockford High School IV World School. At the elementary school, they again participated in the Kids' Heart Challenge. The kickoff was January twenty-ninth, ended on February sixteenth. I was able to go over there to the kickoff and it was wonderful. Students and staff are celebrating reading during I Love to Read Month here in February for several fun events that highlight promote reading. Students in second grade spent time with artist in resident James Hirsch writing songs. Each song wrote a song around a specific topic such as kindness and respect. Mr. Johnson's class wrote a song about twenty years ago in that good school. All the students at Reams created a song, and it was really cool. I would share it with all of them via video. It was a pretty incredible experience for those young people. Reams also has a kindergarten roundup, which is gonna be March the seventh, to welcome our newest learners to Reams for next fall. National Theater for Children will be at Reams on February twenty-third, which is a Friday, doing performances around the topic of energy conservation. And rehearsals have started for all-school song, for the all-school song, which we recorded this spring. At the high school, seven students attended the Construct Tomorrow Fair at the Earl Brown Heritage Center. Over eighteen trade businesses, unions, and state departments shared interactive displays, career insights, inspiration for on how best to prepare for their given fields. A contingent of the student leadership team consisting of the counseling staff, students, other folks in the principal's office, they all attended the regional Justin's Renaissance Conference. The event motivated our students and staff to bring their residents' efforts to the next level, including intentional efforts to recognize student academic achievements, inspirational behavior, and something called an academic pet fest. High school hoped to trial some of these efforts this semester to boost morale even higher than it is amongst the students and the staff. Students also worked with Chef Harland to spread positivity on Valentine's Day by handing out cookies as a surprise treat at lunch, and I got to go do that with the kids. It was really fun. Students in our CNA class have scored very well on their first assessments and conducted their first interactive labs. Our IB Theory of Knowledge class partnered with kindergarten class to create a kindergarten buddy program, helped them dive deeper, truly witnessed how students interpret ideas with own knowledge. The IB students in grades eleven and twelve began their internal assessments, typically a hands-on design for students themselves to demonstrate original understanding together with their external exams taken in the May. That will comprise their final grade for that course, a four or above in a course that makes a student eligible for college credit at most major universities. Our IB and counseling staff began a drive to recycle. We use formal wear. You know, I've been over there. It's pretty cool. They got a lot of stuff there in the office there for that, for winter week formal and for prom. It's a joy to see many students trying on dresses and getting valuable opinions from their peers. In other news, over the past several weeks, I've been engaged in mid-year reviews of our administrators with respect to their goals. Worked with district staff and our consultant CFO Bridget Peterson, who's here tonight, on enrollment, budget, and staffing projections, which Bridget will share a little bit more later this evening. We assisted in fine-tuning the EMR tentative agreement. Attended our quarterly Safe Schools meeting, which was just this morning. Did some policy review, worked as a team in our mid-year access report that we recently submitted to MDE. Attended the National Letter of Intent Signing Day for some of our incredible high school students. Attended the APAC meeting, actually this evening or before this meeting. Spent a lot of time navigating MDE requirements associated with the READ Act, which I will also be touching upon later on this evening. In short, myself and our entire team has been busy, but also very productive as we work to create the best possible learning environment for our students. Since our January meeting, I represented the district by serving on the MAS A Legislative Finance Committee, attending meetings for the schools advocating for fair funding, which will become the official new name of CE this summer. That was voted upon and ratified on the last meeting. Attended the MSD Board of Directors meeting, Masico Advisory Committee meeting, and our monthly meeting with Northwest Urban. I also served on the Federal Agency Committee for MAS A. And I was also asked to participate in an initiative through MSD called Knowledge Works, and I have some handouts today based on what that is. So I spent a day with them, really to construct and working constructing a definition of personalized learning, engaging in innovative and creative thinking, both how, what learning could look like in our schools. So this was a group that was both inside and outside of education to really foster meaningful pedagogy for our kids. Excuse me. Our board also had the opportunity to interact with local State Senator Bruce Anderson, who was kind enough to attend our February work session, to listen, learn, and share his thoughts on the two thousand and twenty-four legislative session. I've also exchanged emails with Representative Walter Hudson, as he's supportive of the property tax equalization that our district needs. Overall, local elected officials have been gracious with their time and very much engaged in the challenging conversations that will hopefully prove beneficial in the Rockford Area schools. Speaking of the legislative session, the latest budget forecast was released. State revenues are up three hundred and thirteen million, or eleven percent over projections. It sounds great, but the surplus is much smaller than it was in two thousand and twenty-three, and most of the money is gonna be used for one-time things such as potentially the READ Act. And we've been told not to anticipate any funding in this non-funding year. Outside of funding, the other legislative topic that's generating interest is the School Resource Officer Bill, that many thought may have been addressed in a special session. It was not, so the issue remains unresolved, but it's been fast-tracked, not fast enough because it hit a couple roadblocks last week, but it sounds like there's a possibility it's gonna be coming to the floor for a vote this week or early next week. We remain thankful to both our Annapin County and Wright County partners for their support and their coverage during this school year. We also have a few items to celebrate, starting with today being School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and next week being National Public Schools Week. As a proud product of public schools and also a former rock star, school bus passenger, I am thankful for both our drivers, who transport our students to and from school safely, and for public schools, which play a significant role in educating an estimated fifty million students a year in the United States. Finally, as I conclude my superintendent's report tonight, I bet you're all happy with my voice going like it is. I want to remind everyone here in person, as well as the millions who may be listening remotely, that February is School Board Member Appreciation Month. Those that know me well know that I'm not a person prone to hyperbole, and I always mean what I say. With that buildup, I want to genuinely and sincerely thank each member of the Rockford Area School Boards for serving our students, our staff, our families, and the greater community, and for doing so for all the right reasons. In a world that is politically polarized, this board listens to understand, is open-minded to learning with and from others, shares their individual and collective thoughts with dignity, respect, and honesty, and quite simply gets the work. It's my privilege to work alongside you, and as a small token of gratitude, we have a certificate of appreciation for each of you. Thank you for your service.
Yay! [applause] Should we do a photo op?
Now we get it.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thankfully for me and also members who are listening, I am done with my superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Idlehoover. Truly appreciate it. Thank you for recognition as well, and it's my honor, sure ours, as well to work along with you, so thank you. We will then give Dr. Idlehoover a break, and we'll move on to our student achievement and growth, and come to our robotics celebration, so I would like to call Ms. Holly Kimball and group to the table.
Come on up, it's you guys. [laughing] Is that chair? Alex. Okay. So I'm Holly Kimball. I'm the first robotics competition coach, ninth through twelfth grade, and today we're gonna focus a little bit on First Tech Challenge, so this is the first year that we've had this group, seventh and eighth graders, and Rebecca Bowers, sorry, volunteered to be the lead for this coach. She got all the seventh and eighth graders, which is super fun, and lots of energy. I couldn't handle that much, sorry. And they had their first season. They started in September. They built their robots. They performed really well, and their season ended in January. I'll let Becky and Derek and Liam tell you a little bit about how that went for them.
Awesome. Do you have the... I'll bring that up. So I'm, my name is Becky Barrows. I actually volunteered to coach for the middle school team this year because Holly's team last year went to Worlds, and my son was on the team, and I just had such a great time at that robotics competition. It was such a blast, and there was so much energy, and it was just great seeing this opportunity for the kids that maybe don't get to do those type of, you know, competitive activities. And as soon as that was over, Holly asked me, and she said, "Okay, did you mean it when you said you would volunteer? Because I want you to coach." And I just said, "You would like to..." So, yeah, I mean, it has been a great year. I've really enjoyed it. I think at this point, I'm in it for life. I think I will continue doing this for a while, and it's been a lot of fun. So we are Operation Over Clock. That was our team name this year. We were team number two, three, four, eight, zero. So if you get a chance to go out and search the First website, look for our team, you can see a history of all of our season this year, and you can also watch some of our matches live, which was, is a lot of fun. Go to the next. So as Holly said, this is a new team that's strictly for middle school students. In Rockford specifically, it is open to seventh and eighth grade students currently. We competed in what's called First Tech Challenge, which is part of the First Robotics Programs. That program itself is targeted from grade seven up to twelve. So these guys this year had to compete against senior high-level teams, and they did amazing. We decided to compete in what's called a league format, so we have three meets throughout the season where we're competing against the same twelve teams. And then at the end of our season, we have a final tournament, which helps determine who goes on to state and eventually on to Worlds. I think that final tournament was twenty-four total teams for us. So our season this year, for a bunch of kids who have never done robotics before, they did amazing, and I am so incredibly proud of the amount of learning that they did this year and the effort that they put in. So their overall season record this year was thirteen and five. In our league, our very first meet, we were ranked second. The next two meets, we were ranked first, and we took first overall in our league, which is...
Yay!
And so because they did so well in each of their meets, at the end of those meets, they do what's called an elimination tournament, and so we managed to qualify, I think? Were we the first alliance?
We were fifth, but another team got...
Well, no, in the meets. Were we first alliance in all the meets?
Yes.
So they did amazingly well. So at the end of their season, they combine all of the leagues into two tournaments, and based on your performance throughout the season, they rank you on where you're gonna start when you enter that tournament. They started at fourth out of all the league teams that were at our tournament, so fourth out of twenty-four, which is amazing. We had a few hiccups throughout that tournament, but we ended up ranked fifth overall, and so they do the final elimination bracket, is who, what decides who goes to state, and they were the fourth-place alliance, and we were the team captain for that alliance. So the only downside is unfortunately, we lost in semifinals, but it was a, it was a really good one, and it was very enjoyable, had a very good time.
And just for comparison, at our C for the first year, we didn't have as much funding, but we scored one point, and that's it. And we were very happy. We were ranked like seventy, but we scored one point the whole time. So they, in comparison, they did a way better than we did.
All right, you and Derek, if you'd like to demo our robot and explain to a conference.
You guys are welcome to stand up and come closer if you'd like to see the robot. It's kind of fun.
So right now, I'm Derek. I'm driving chassis. We have it set up to tank drive, so the right joystick controls the right side and the left stick controls the left. So I can spin, fill up anywhere. Liam is on arm. What is the arm? And claw. So what we had to do was we had to pick these pixels up and place them on a backboard. So score three points for the backboard. If we scored, if we put all three of these colors on a little triangle, we could score how many extra points?
There you go.
Ten extra points, so we would get a total of nineteen points for the three on the board and ten extra for the robotic. And those red wheels, that was our paper airplane launcher.
Whoa! That's so cool!
So we can launch paper airplanes and score points with that. We got close to scoring with it, but we never actually did. It never left the arena, so.
That's really cool.
I have to work with you, Trent.
And I think that was my favorite part of the entire season. So that airplane launcher, they did that work within the last two weeks before our final tournament, and they kept running into roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. Every time I asked them, "Do you guys wanna scrap it and just practice driving and get prepped for the tournament?", the answer was always no. I mean, they continued to push through all the way to the final match. They were still testing that airplane launcher to try to get it to work, and they got so close. We were all on the edge of our seat.
It was within like three inches.
Oh, my God.
Oh, really?
Very cool. I feel like you should show Jeff how to run it, so he can see how easy it is. I'm so excited to talk to him. Why don't you try?
You wanna try?
So that's four.
Or Paul, have you got a chance? You can try, Paul.
I'm gonna let him rank it.
You need to...
Let's get this.
Yeah, you need to...
Is your season over?
Our season doesn't keep him on the...
What are we doing here?
We need to be able to try. I have so... X, Y, Z, M.
All right. That one's gonna punch.
Right, you're sticking... We got the three more.
I think they're better at it.
They are.
A and B move the...
There you go.
You can ask me questions. Look, did they do a good job?
[laughter] Thank you, guys.
You're making a good job. That is awesome.
That's like cool. You guys, great job. It's just so amazing.
You know, we met about a month ago or so, and I want to say thank you to both of you for leading these kids, and thank you, guys, because you are absolutely amazing. Wow, a way to represent Rockford.
Nice job.
Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I forgot I had a fine slide. So because this season went so well, Holly and I have been talking, and one of the struggles that we had this year is because we had so many kids. So we had ten teen kids on the team this year, which means seventh and eighth grade, which is great. We love that turnout. It's great. The only problem we ran into is there was just not enough work to keep everything busy. So what we'd like to do going forward is to have additional teams and potentially add ninth graders, too, to kind of help bridge that gap between doing this program and moving to the beta robots. So one of the ways we're gonna help fund that is to potentially start hosting some FTC events here in Rockford. So that's one of the things we're gonna start talking to the local high-tech kids is the one that runs it in Minnesota, so we're planning to talk to them to see what we can do to make that happen for you, so.
Cool. Thank you very much. You guys should just walk outside and go see the tournament.
No. Superbowl.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to item six B, and Principal Warzekka, you are up to follow that, so hopefully you're as excited.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I'm sure there will be.
He is bringing someone who's...
Yes, that's right. Another secret weapon.
Who used to be in robotics and is thinking about joining our...
All right, so give me just one second to get all set up here. All right, we'll get there. All right, so ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Idlehoover, I am coming to you live with a great joy to be able to celebrate our student council president, Grace Olufemi. So, as she, I did prepare her for this one, that I was gonna gather some feedback from those teachers, adults that have worked with Grace, and just gonna read them here for her, and so the first one, she is extremely humble, which I'm sure she does not really appreciate me reading all of these positive things, but we're gonna roll with it anyway. Always willing to help, strives to improve in anything she does, and maintains a high level of work and work ethic. She is caring, has a huge heart and an amazing smile. She speaks with elegance and poise. This next one speaks to who she is. She commands any room that she enters. So true. She has great ideas, but a great listener. She's approachable to every student, which is quite impressive as an eighth grader. Having a fifth-grade brother in the audience helps. Also, as I point out, family is here, Dad and fifth-grade brother, also in the student council, and Mom and sister on the Google Meet.
Welcome!
And then she wants what's best for everybody in the building. She's someone who everyone respects what's up to, honest, has integrity, will advocate for what is right in almost every situation, and she's someone who can truly be happy for those around them and help them grow. She's determined, passionate, and the best kind of spunky, but most importantly, she is very diplomatic. She understands the importance of compromise and listening to others. She knows about how to get things done, even as that means things that look, might look differently than you previously imagined. So with that, I turn it over to Grace Olufemi, who'll do what she's been doing all year long, leading.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Grace Olufemi, and I am the president of student council. And today, what I have to present to you is this, what's been going on at Rockford Middle School, and just a little bit about myself and what characteristics that I want to look up to as I grow. So I strive for opportunities to lead. It allows me to grow personally. I have the ability to listen to people with their concerns and present them to my peers, where we all brainstorm ideas and make a solution. I respect my peers. I know I'll always strive for inclusion, diversity, and equality for all students. As I learn, I become better equipped for future roles and my hunger for leadership emerges. I chose Rockford Middle School because it is the one district that equipped stud and environmental studies in all three schools, be it the elementary school, this school, and high school. Attending RMS CES gives me the ability to explore more hands-on experiences. RMS CES is a small and family-oriented school where all teachers, students, and parents know each other, which makes it a great learning slash safe community for me and my peers. As the president of student council, I am proud to be a part of Rockford Middle School. All right. All right, here are some things on the agenda. Agenda, the choir concert that occurred on February fifth. Since I'm a choir student, we have choir classes leading up to concerts, and basically some of my classmates and my students can be a bit rowdy, like we disrespect a lot times, but thanks to our teacher, Mr. Anderson, our choir teacher, he is able to keep us all in check, and he just, that obviously shows at the concerts how well we do. Voices might be just a little bit spooky, but you know, we are going to get there, and I am proud to see the outcome of everything that we have accomplished. The next thing is I Love to Read Month, so since it's fun and great, most schools like to incorporate I Love to Read Month, and I would say that it's definitely a great thing to be a part of, a great thing that we have at Rockford Middle School, because I feel like it gives us that time to relax and just read, and lots of students, we don't know what they're going through, so I feel like once we have those activities, when it comes to I Love to Read Month, like we pick an hour throughout the day, mostly every Thursday or every other Thursday, and just throughout that whole hour, we just read, relax, get comfortable, and just, you know, be with our peers. So I just feel like that is... So I just feel like that is something great that we have to offer at Rockford Middle School. And also since it's February, it's not only I love to read month, it's also Black History Month. So, you know, me being a proud black woman, I would feel like we could definitely do some more things to have Black History Month be more like acknowledged at Rockford Middle School. Um, I feel like the high school definitely does a great job when it comes to that, and I feel like, you know, just overall, just make it more acknowledged, and I would like to be a part of anything that we can do to just make that kind of as equal, or more as equal as I love to read month. So definitely, there's always room to improve, and improving takes time, but in the future, hopefully we are able to make that more important as well. Next thing we have is the spelling bee. Um, out of the three years I have been at Rockford Middle School, I have been into spelling bees, and you know, I feel like Rockford Middle School definitely does a great job when it comes to these spelling bees, and I feel like it's definitely one of the items throughout the year that I enjoy the most, because it's one of the times I get to study all those words, you know, get ready, and just, since I'm very competitive, you know, just get my words out there. But, um, so last year, January twenty-three, I got second place, and my friend Imani got first place, you know, I was very proud of how well I did and how well my friend did as well. This year, it was January eleventh, I think, twenty-two-four, and you know, little hiccups, a bit nervous, but it's okay, I got this place, and I was still very proud of myself for going as far as I was willing to go. Next thing on the agenda is the band concert that occurred on February eighth. Um, before February eighth, I had never been to a band concert, because my brother and I, Samuel from the audience, we were both choir students, so I never really attended any band concerts. But this year, my brother decided to go over to band, and that's just gave me the opportunity to witness him on the stage at the Rockford High School auditorium, and just watch him and his classmates and other people do well on the stage, and really have the courage to, you know, play their instruments and do well. And I feel like their band teacher, Ms. Bauer, definitely does a great job when it comes to that, she does a great job at preparing her students, because that shows at the concerts and stuff, so it's a great thing to be a part of and watch. Next thing is the Bakerfield trip. Um, this year, it was supposed to be a ski trip, but due to the lack of snow, you know, um, we had to change it and just make it like a regular Bakerfield trip experience. And what a Bakerfield trip is, is just like when we go over to Baker, and they give us the experience of how to really like connect with nature by itself. So they're really being on no phones, because you know, we're outside, we're supposed to be having fun without our phones. And I feel like they do a great job when it comes to that. Um, this year will be my last year going to Baker as a school, which is kind of sad, but at the same time, you know, I've learned a lot from that, and I'm glad I was able to be a part of that experience. Next thing on our agenda is the Snow Week Dress Up Days, uh, this week, since it was a four-day week, since it was President's Day yesterday, or not yesterday, Monday. So, um, our student council has been able to prepare some dress up days throughout the week, and on Tuesday was Hawaiian UAW Day, so you know, you know, can wear like big skirts, floral things, and just, you know, have fun with the dress up days. Wednesday, which was today, was Time Traveler Day, so today I wore like something from the nineties or like the two thousands, like I kind of, you know, emphasized upon that time, but, um, I wore like a, a jean jacket with some pair of pants and like some long earrings that I'm wearing now, and then like I wore a bandage for like, you know, the, the Rockford Nelly back in the day, to represent him. And yeah, I feel like these days are really fun. Then tomorrow is supposed to be Big Smash Day, so you know, have fun, like, don't coordinate your outfit, just be you at this point, because it's Big Smash Day. Then on Friday is Pigeon Day, the beloved. Alright, and then the last thing on our agenda is the dance that's coming up on March eighth, from six PM to eight-thirty PM. And basically, how us as a student council, we have been working pretty hard to make this dance feel pretty good, and trying to make sure that all of our students are included when it comes to planning, because you don't want to like plan something and the students don't like it, and it's just like they fail, you know. But, um, I just want to say thank you to the student council itself, for, you know, always being there, always working hard, and all of the, all of the accomplishments here, really what it's, you know, have been able to work out. So, um, that's really great of them and of us to do. And the thing for the dance this year would be Candy Land, or like just candy in general. Uh, we've had lots of opinions, um, like the upperclassmen, like the eighth graders or seventh graders, because, you know, they think it's lame, but since we have fifth graders and sixth graders, we think that it wishes appropriate for a theme that everyone, I feel like, would be included, and I feel like everyone would have fun. So, you know, Candy Land, which is a great option that we picked. And I would also like to say thank you to Ms. Kaufman, our seventh grade social studies teacher. She was like the head of student council and volunteer club, which I have both been a part of throughout my years at Rockford Middle School, and I definitely would say she is a great teacher, great person, she has definitely done a lot for the school, so I just want to say a big shout out to her. And just like to big shout outs to everyone who's been with the opportunity and platforms to show who I am, and like just everything that I am today, just thank you all for everything. And I am very glad to be part of Rockford Middle School, and I'm very glad to be here to go giving you guys this update, so thank you so much. Yeah, so if you guys have any questions, or something, oh my god.
Any questions, or, or hard-hitting questions, or just appreciations?
I have both. I have all of them. Um, first, appreciation, of course, I just love how inclusive you, um, are with the rest of your city council member, or, not city, uh, council members, um, and with the rest, yeah, the rest of the students in the school, with your, your brother even, it seems like. Um, but I do have one question for you. You mentioned that you'd like Rockford to bring more attention to Black History Month. Uh, do you have any ideas or suggestions that would, um, that you would like to see happen? Maybe, maybe they can't happen in the next couple of days, but maybe, uh, for next year, and you can leave that as a legacy, or, um, anything?
Yeah, um, I would say like maybe, you know how we have like some, some boards in the hall and stuff like that? Maybe we could have like more like artwork, like artwork tied up, or like, just like more pictures to represent Black History Month, or more teachers talking more about it, because throughout February, all of our I love to read month, I love to read month, you know, happened to Black History Month, so, yeah, I would just be like, I don't really have big ideas yet, because it's just something I kind of came up with on the spot, but otherwise, those were some things that I honestly took to it.
Those are great ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Do you have lots of candy ready for the school dance? For candy?
Just remember seeds of ideas grow into those big ideas, right? The seeds grow into those big ideas, so keep going, keep going. Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
So, we know that Grace and her family are very busy, so if they need to, we excuse it this time, you're welcome to stay, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not really sure how I'm supposed to follow up, but, uh, we appreciate that, Grace, and her leadership, and we'll absolutely, uh, adapt, uh, into her ideas as she leads her legacy at Rockford Middle School, that will be, uh, her fingerprints will be on this place for years, we kind of appreciate her.
Sounds like it.
Thank you so much, so we will move on then. Your shoes can be filled, those are gray shoes, Mr. Warzekka.
I appreciate that.
Yes, um, but your principals report then, please.
Perfect. Um, so I began the, uh, agenda here on my time with you, uh, to do two things. One, acknowledge those student leaders and give them an opportunity to lead, and I thank you, uh, for allowing them, being able to do that. My update is pretty short, but, uh, the second component that you're getting here from me is I am just your head, um, the work we do that matters is a sum total of a whole lot of people, and, uh, to the board, I try to bring, uh, a different group every time. And so the, the bottom group are the names of our front office staff, and they are the unsung heroes of our buildings, uh, they're, they vary best at what they do on any given day, making sure that everybody has what they need, um, and to evolve our systems from a million different directions, uh, considering safety and security, uh, making sure people are connected, a lot of times that good work starts there. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge them. As we start, um, as you may have seen in many, uh, different headlines across the country, uh, the term consistent attendance and chronic absenteeism are terms that you hear, uh, in national news recently, and I just want to remind the board, uh, that this comes straight from MBE, and that we have an active PLC, counciling PLC that takes on this work, um, and you may be aware of this, this work. We understand there's always special circumstances and things, uh, that happen, uh, but it is, uh, one focus of ours this year to make sure that we are having these conversations exploratory in nature, uh, nonjudgmental and curious, that ultimately tries to figure out what is getting in the way of students who, um, might fall into that ten percent or more throughout the year, so what can we do to break that down? Uh, it is not an exact science, and we do not have to figure it out, uh, but it is work worth doing, and, um, I just want the board aware of it. Moving on to some building updates, and I, uh, kind of put everything on this one slide. So we are heading into testing season, so that means we, of course, are preparing our students in multiple ways, um, including, uh, the very real stress management, uh, anxiety piece of what comes with, there's many tests. Um, so that's something that we will head into as we prepare kind of for the April testing season. Uh, we are in full swing of our academic advising, uh, process, that it more systemically looks at students who, uh, are beneath a, a level of student achievement, and has one-on-one conversations with our student support, uh, personnel, to be able to figure out what's getting in the way, and just to let them know that we care, on notice, and we're here to help. Um, and those, uh, conversations, uh, are yielding a lot of good nuggets and wisdom that helps move forward in the process. Magnet pillars, uh, Jamie Mattson has done amazing work around making, uh, our R and R feedback known and relevant throughout the entire year, so that our, um, teaching staff really understand both the feedback that we got through the R and R process, uh, but the magnet pillars themselves, and Rupert, who just scored. Um, so kudos to him and the team, uh, we've been taking one at every staff meeting, and jumping into it at a pretty deep level. Um, biomes, I'll touch base a little bit, but, uh, we're continuing our partnership with Cedar Creek University in Minnesota, through Cedar Creek, uh, and had a great E D session around, um, a blended learning playlist that actually allowed each grade level team to have a one-on-one with the expert about how, how do we better understand that biome, uh, each grade level biome, and how do we integrate that in our core concept, if you think the old interdisciplinary units, um, or grade level scales, we can all tie into as we go through and, um, help make learning more relevant and interconnected. Um, and that fits brilliantly with the, um, magnet, uh, focus as well. Then, just for your awareness, we had a blended learning playlist on the January twenty-second staff development, uh, that included required works in the terms of biomes, inquiry, restorative practices, evidence-based communication, specifically the claim evidence reasoning framework, and then having every staff look at our website for fifteen minutes and take careful notes, so that we can improve our communication, uh, based network. Um, and all of that, we're getting great option, or great, um, momentum up. Also, we had, um, additional time that teachers could plan, um, you, learning more of a clever touch, uh, navigating pillar feedback, standard mapping, common assessment, um, sometime their own self-care, making their own self-care plan prior to going into spring, and then also digging deeper, um, on restorative work. So, that's a little bit about what we've been up to, but we also have, uh, embedded some, uh, tier-one literacy work into our boost program each week, uh, which is new, and that's been operationalized, um, and that's yielded some great, uh, skill-building conversation. And then exploring soon, uh, this idea of the hammock forest, uh, in the nature of like, I love to read, okay, that fits who we are, and also loves reading, and, uh, really cool environment, so, uh, and also re-envisioning what it looks like on a pole, um, kind of on top of the hill, and, uh, how we can make that more accessible for our alumni. So that's a little bit of the updates. Uh, this time, uh, perhaps, uh, although you might be reluctant, I welcome, uh, Jamie Mattson up, he's going to have a really awesome afternoon about, uh, our new outdoor club.
Alright, um, so outdoor club. Uh, there was a grant that came through, Tell No Child Left Behind, excuse me, No Child Left Inside, um, through the DNR, that we applied for, um, we were, it was kind of lottery basis, um, but we did end up getting one of the grants for that. Um, it was just over forty-two hundred dollars, um, centered around outdoor club. Outdoor club is, it's kind of come full circle, this is one of the very first things we did twelve years ago, when we became a STEM school, we had an outdoor club, we had some funding at that time. Um, at that time, it was brought Russell and I taking kids literally to these same places, um, French Regional, we did some geocaching there, um, Lake Marri, we did some canoeing. And like Rebecca, um, at that time, was hiking, it was meant to be snowshoeing this time around, we'll see how this rolls out. So, uh, the funds are to, um, it's based for transportation, uh, it pays for, a good chunk of it, that pays for, um, some handheld navigation tools, some, some GPS tools. Um, we need some, some easier-to-run ones, the ones that we got a long time ago, the original grant money forever ago, um, it's a long story, but they're not as kid-friendly as they could be. And there are tools that, that can be used beyond just that, um, there's a ton of mapping skills that can be learned without. Um, so the way the club works is, uh, it'll be once this spring, uh, that'll be a French Regional, and then once in, per season basically, so next year, fall, winter, spring, um, Rebecca, uh, yeah, Rebecca, uh, French Regional, and Maria, different activities by age one, so it'll be no cost to the students, um, anywhere from twenty to twenty-five kids, kind of depending how it rolls out, um, with thoughts that this is kind of, um, trial basis, is maybe something that's could be offered through community at some point. So I'm also sitting back there, I've spoken to her about this, but, um, but the potential is there, uh, to do it. So this is a chance for kids to extend beyond, um, the normal school day, and give them an experience that they wouldn't normally get. Um, so it was, it was fun we did the last time, we wrote the grant and said, let's try it for it, and we got the grant, so thumbs up. Um, as long as you gave me a mic in front of the school board, um, this is, um, a, something I was just looking up, outdoor club, and this is something, Jeff talked a little bit about legislation, going back into session, um, something very important to us, um, is a bill that came through last year, hasn't gotten a lot of traction yet this year, um, but will be coming up again, it's called Outdoor Education for All. Um, it, it kind of fell apart a little bit last year, but it's, it's got some good support this year. Basically, the bill is, um, to support schools attending multi-day outdoor education facilities à la deep forage. Uh, so the intention behind the bill is a little fun, uh, basically attendance, transportation, staff segments, all things related to these multi-day experiences that we have like deep forage. So, once this comes up again, there's different ways you can have that legislature and things like that, uh, but I will send something out to you. Um, it's very important to us, deep forage is a very important trip to us, kind of a keystone for us, it'd be great to have funding like that, um, to be able to continue sustaining this, so. It, it, it did get a lot of traction last year, and when Mr. McDonald here, with Joe McDonald, who we may have mentioned it to him once in a while, um, as we were walking around our building, so. Thank you.
It's good for us to know this.
Any questions?
I just want to say, thanks for telling us about that, it's good for us to know this.
Yeah, once it, I, I just looked as I was sitting out there, it's not, it hasn't been, there's no traction yet this year, but it will come up again, um, for sure, so.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move on to sixteen, your restorative practices.
Thank you.
You don't want to have Mr. Mattson show up and stay there and ask him how his actions are affecting yours? You don't want to have Mr. Mattson show up and stay there and ask him how his actions are affecting yours?
Yeah. I will be mindful of time, I know, uh, we're a little bit over. Um, so restorative practices, and I don't know, next year, perfect. Um, restorative practice is hard to summarize and certainly, uh, difficult to capture in a single presentation slide. Um, really, the heart of what I believe Rockford, uh, to be is that relationships matter, legal matter. That's a community, we matter. And how we exist, uh, within that space, within those relationships, matter most. Um, and that is a skill set as much as it is a value subset. Um, so restorative practices is really targeted on, um, trying to understand what is it that we can do, uh, as educators, uh, to create a system where we can have intentional conversations, um, around relationships. So, um, I'm summarizing the work of many people, uh, but this, and again, I, I won't read necessarily, uh, every sing- single thing, but this effort is an inten- intentional, um, effort to be able to systematize the language around restorative at Rockford very soon. So when you see what are restorative practices, it's for us to be able to understand what is that. Um, and right now, uh, our main focus is around those immediate in student support services, a la counselors and those in staff coaching positions. Um, and we know spring in schools is tough. And part of the why now is making sure that those people, uh, who are most first on the scene in issues of student conflict have the, have the proper training skills and confidence to step in those spaces and help restore those relationships so they don't turn into the bigger items. Um, so really quick on the what it is, I, I know you may have heard of it. Um, essentially behavior is communication. And so, uh, when you look at this specific, um, slide, what we see on the behavior is the tip of the iceberg. And there's a ton of things going on underneath that, uh, that describe all the student feels, um, what's going on with them or skills that they may not be able to readily express. And so we know that relationships are important. We've all been hearing that forever. Um, we spend a lot of time on building relationships, but in terms of skills, strategies, framework, sometimes where that falls off is that maintaining restorative and sustaining those relationships. And restorative practices, um, fits that, um, hold, uh, very well. And so that was part of the reason for stepping into that space. Some of the why is improving school climate, uh, and, uh, really talking about that responsibility in relationships, uh, promoting that social emotional skill development that you've been hearing from us, uh, recently. Talking about safety, that first line of safety is really the relationships that we have among, uh, the peers, uh, teachers, um, and the adults in their life. And then, um, to decrease conflict and volatile situations even on the onset, because a lot of times, um, those, those things confessor or, uh, when we only know part of the story, our brain loves to complete that story even though that might not be true. So restorative allows us to, um, have conversations with the other party in a structured format that allows to hear what is their intent and how can we, uh, best move forward in that relationship. And most of all, it promotes student behavior. Uh, in all, all threads, if you're worried about what a, a classmate thinks of you, it's going to be hard to focus on it. If you're worried about a dynamic with a teacher, it's going to be hard to focus on your learning. So, um, it's just a structure and a framework and a way of thinking that allows us to access those meaningful conversations. There's seven questions, um, kind of up on the front screen. And if, if ever to, uh, summarize these into relationships, it's curiosity and skill set. And so the heart of these questions really is let's get curious and let's talk about, um, because a lot of times we know with students, if they can, uh, solve their own problems and we can help them in that process, um, that it goes a lot better and they build the skills and confidence in doing that similarly in, uh, in more of a transferable way. Um, and then kind of summarize all of this, um, like any employer would say, uh, knowing how to effectively handle conflicts is a significant life skill. Um, and we have that responsibility and that opportunity, um, to willingly come to us escalated or in certain situations, to be able to help them process that through that specific situation, um, and ultimately help restore, help them restore that relationship. So here's a little bit of what it is, uh, in summary. Um, again, it could be from student to student, teacher to student, it could be any relational context. Um, but these are short conversations and dialogue from two willing parties. We don't drag, uh, anybody into the, this work, uh, not only because it's against best practice, because we want this work to be transformational. Um, and sometimes that doesn't happen right away. Sometimes that takes, uh, days, weeks, uh, to come back to that conversation. And typically, um, it occurs between, uh, like I said, two specific people. And it's just intentional way to surface any concerns and talk well then in a constructive manner. Um, and usually there's a follow-up involved. So now what, um, why training? Pretty simple because it matters and it's important that those, uh, folks are, have the skills and base fundamental knowledge to deal with it, those situations. Um, I've given you a little bit of why restorative practice, why now? Talked to you a little bit about why in the spring. And then why Sheila Dawkins? So backing up, Sheila Dawkins is somebody who prepared this work, um, because, I'll just be honest, the training, uh, that we looked at didn't get great reviews. And so we custom, had to customize this specifically to Rockford and specifically did it in video format. So as we get new staff or year to year, we can take those videos and, uh, show that as a foundation of what we believe, uh, with restorative work. In addition, she has two meetings coming up, one tomorrow, together in a month from now with those groups. And they're just Q and A, 25 minutes to help, uh, have those conversations. What are the barriers and how, and how can we help you implement and try these strategies? Um, also future forward, if we have a group next year or beyond, she has the ability to do those 25-minute, um, conversations, which is just us being stewards of our resources as well as, uh, being able to meet the need at the time of the need. Um, so we're excited about that. FYI, Sheila Dawkins comes to us, uh, previously, she was a lawyer. And she saw the need to jump ahead of this work and work in schools and is, and, um, she's done in a lot of deep level training of restorative, um, from the prison systems to schools and everywhere in between. And so we're, we're grateful that she can customize her work, uh, to our needs. So again, um, there's two 40-minute videos that'll be available to all staff starting with students support services. And then really focusing on like spring implementation and then taking it to all staff from there, um, as appropriate in the building. So at that time, I yield your question.
Any questions?
I kind of have a bunch of questions. Um, what, so are we getting rid of different, like, ways to deal with behaviors to implement this? Or is this an add-on in addition to what we already do?
Good question. We've been helping students, uh, deal with conflict since the dawn of time and we will continue to do so. So I think it is, uh, aligning that practice to what we know works through best practice research. And so in addition, um, it's not another thing on the plate. It is the actual plate, as script for some would say. Um, so it's the work that we do. Um, in terms of our approach, uh, we are very much relational aligned. We have a lot of these restorative pieces. If you walk our halls, listen to our conversations, this exists, but we have not had the prior training or that foundational knowledge. Um, and so this is just making sure that we have the universal understanding of the why and what. Um, anything out of that?
Yeah. We knew this was something we wanted to do and I had a conversation with principals early on in my tenure this summer. I took the liberty of putting an FAQ on all of the schools', uh, webpages. It's under, uh, Student Sports, I think it is. So you could pull it up, there's an FAQ on there that might help answer some questions. Again, this isn't to replace something, it is the something, building empathy in kids. How we treat each other, that sort of thing, so. We were fortunate enough, because I, I've been through several trainings of this, most of which I thought were subpar. And fortunately Paul had a connection with, with Sheila and, you know, he shared it with me and I thought this was the way to go.
And that, I guess that's where my other question goes, um, a lot of like, any study that I've seen on this? Like there was, I don't know, one in Pennsylvania and it said that academic results actually declined at the middle school level. Um, so I just, I just want to make sure that it's not, it doesn't take away from education time. Like, I mean, is, is it like the whole classroom? If there's a classroom disturbance where it's, or is it just like a one-on-one type thing?
So, so specifically to the training of the counselor, um, is the strategy of like, uh, restorative chats. So typically one adult, two kids in, in the student setting. So oftentimes those conversations were happening, um, in staff, in which principal's office and counseling office. Um, but the structure was probably dependent on which one of those human beings you had. So we're aligning that, those conversations first. So specifically as they talked about the implementation this spring, it's going to be to those types of conversations or to the conversations with a teacher and student, uh, that I would be a part of. And it's again, just creating the space, not of the judge or the juror, I'm just creating space for the conversation to happen and help that conversation perform.
And then, uh, is this training gonna like, I can just imagine a kid feel, I mean, you say you don't have to drag them into it, but I can feel kids feeling like they have to participate and stuff like that. So is the training going to, you know, help?
Yes, so the Q and A specifically is going to help process, uh, and talk through some examples of that. So, um, to help with that, um, what doesn't work is the same day, this just happened, let's, let's talk about it right now. Um, there sh- surely might be times for that, but I would say pretty standard is let's let the dust settle, come back. Do you want to talk or do you still want to talk? Do you want to talk? Um, let's vote together. Um, and again, um, there's no guilt tripping. It's truly, uh, if I, if I sense reluctance, it's, um, hey, what's going on? So again, it's all trying to help them move to have relationship work. Because we're a small community and the reality is, um, they're going to see each other in the halls, they're going to see each other, uh, in the classrooms. And, uh, what this allows us to do is be able to help them finish the story of how the other person's going to treat them, um, because we have that conversation. And again, we might be able to have that if both parties have a, so, not to get in the weeds, but that's, that's interesting.
Last question, uh, money-wise, um, because I've read that like, to be implemented properly, if, if there's added people or stuff like that, and I know you said they tailored it to Rockford, so maybe those things are not. But is there a cost to implementing this?
Sure. Okay, so specifically, we were very mindful back, uh, to the point where we costed out, uh, different, um, different trainings of what it would go to, all of which costs significantly more than what we paid to get what we have, um, including all the consultations, the Q and A, my work with the principals and getting our vision of kind of what we wanted specifically here, um, uh, was a thousand dollars for all of it, including those follow, follow-ups. Um, and then keeping in mind future follow-ups are going to be significantly less. Um, so it's truly, um, in terms of to implement restorative chats, there doesn't need to be a dime perspective additional, um, or additional staff, it's quit up. So we're making sure the staff we have have the proper skills, uh, or confidence and to be able to, uh, let those conversations go as well.
And then I, last one, how do we know if it's working? If it's, I mean, I think as a parent, this is how we parent our kids. And so we'd love to see our teachers do the same thing, have relationships with our kids. Um, I feel like it's so much harder at a school when you have thirty kids, you know, to have a one-on-one relationship with each student and they're switching throughout the day. So how do we know that it's working?
Could be my best answer to that. Um, so, uh, everything I've read in terms of, um, and there's different aims, so I would caution against, um, uh, if you, if you look up this work specifically, what we're talking about is restorative practices and restorative chats more specifically. Um, so in terms of the research, everything I've read is, uh, and have gone through, there's a pretty high correlation that, uh, this actually improves student achievement. So ultimately, that's why we're here. That's why we exist is for learning. So that's, that's the simplest answer to your question. Um, but the other component is, um, if kids can identify a trusted adult, uh, if we can, um, specifically, uh, we monitor our repeat offenders, uh, and our behavior, things like that, our amputations. Folks that we use are mindful of that, um, basically does it, let me rephrase it, does it work for that kid? Um, because if we can remove a barrier for that one student to better engage in school, uh, then it works for that one student.
Thank you. Do that, um, we don't mean to train everybody. We don't want everybody trained. It's very specific people, uh, who are going to engage in this work. And it doesn't happen every day. So it's a, we think it's an appropriate time for this. It isn't a full classroom conversation. There could be times if parties want, you know, we've done it actually this year where we've had families come in. I sat in with Paul. It either works. And I'm, I'm really thankful that Paul had the connection because that's why we got this, I'll say, on the very cheap. Um, and it is tailored specifically to Rockford. And that's what I think is pretty cool.
Any other questions for Principal?
Uh, not a question, just a comment. So just, um, gratitude for leaning into the conversations that matter in ways that, um, it sounds like will be tailored to the students that are involved. But also I just, I believe strongly in having that framework to support your staff so that everyone has that common language. And, um, and if you think about kids going from one trusted adult to another trusted adult, like that experience for those kids that are, you know, maybe struggling or having these issues, to have them be received in similar ways by different adults in the building is a, is a, is a good thing. So I'm super jazzed, I'm excited to see how this goes. And I'm also really grateful for kind of using some of those connections and what I see is a scalable approach because you've got those videos, you've got ways to do it, and then you've got these like, quick hits for, you know, if you need to have some of those FAQs. So just, it seems really thoughtful. Um, but I just wanted to say, like, immense gratitude for leaning into the hard conversations because that's, that's a big part of the why too. Thank you.
Then the, uh, next item, uh, Mr. Stewart for DECA, I believe.
All right, hello, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board. This one's on, right? All right, now you hear me, hi. Hey, this is my daughter and my son. And I play single parent while my wife is away on a business trip. So, um.
Have a seat, have a seat.
Just for a second, I'm, I'm going to, over real quick. So I'm here as the DECA advisor, I'm also the business teacher, I'm a tennis coach, all, and exhausted father. And I'm here, the purpose of this is to ask for permission for our DECA students to participate in the overnight state competition that they've all qualified for. The, I've been here, this is my third year now, so, including the times I've asked for us to go to state and the times I've asked for us to go to nationals, this is now my fifth time in front of you guys talking about DECA. And so I feel it's probably getting to the point that it feels routine and dull. And what am I going to say to jazz it up this time? So instead of me blabbing about our accomplishments, I have invited along two of our DECA vice presidents who can run through some of the achievements we've gone through this year, some of the things that we've improved this year, and then to run through some of the details for state in my place so that hopefully they'll be a little bit more, uh, enthusiastic and fun to listen to compared to me. So I've invited Kennedy Torborg and Joey Cleath, our, two of our vice presidents from DECA. So come on up, guys, you're.
Hi, okay, so, yeah, like you said, we're vice presidents for our DECA chapter over at the high school. And so basically, just want to talk about what DECA was in general and this process here. So for those. So for those that are unaware, DECA is basically, it's like a business club in LA. Uh, where we as students get to do different competitions where we get to compete different events based in marketing, finance, hospitality, tourism, and then also management. So people can do different things like role plays, or you can do like planned projects where you get like each of these different prompts and then you get a project, you present it, and just be at different chapter events as well. And so basically the main point of it is just to prepare people, like say for me, like I'm going to go to law for business, right? So this has been really helpful for me for just learning how to like, you know, different skills that, um, you know, real world someday. But also like to help you with like talking to people that kind of how I am now. But, uh, and stuff like that, and also helps people like if they want to be virgin years, um, as you said.
So we have, um, three, um, main competitions for DECA. The first one is districts, which all of our members competed and that took place January, yeah, January thirty-first. And so what that is, is we go to St. Cloud Crossroads Mall and we, all of our members compete in our events. And then the ones who qualify then go on to state, which is what we're asking for permission for. But districts for us was super successful. We had sixty-three members this year and forty-one of our sixty-three members made it to state. And then we had twenty members make it to state in, um, two or more events. So that's, that's pretty exciting for us. And then as of right now, we have six members who have already qualified for nationals, which is the highest level of competition. And that's just based on like the certain projects that we do, something like the SBE paper, which is written about how, how our school stores run and stuff like that. So yeah, we're excited about that too.
And so this year's menu that we've done is a drive campaign. It's a pro, it's a, kind of like an event that we've done through our DECA chapter, like last year we introduced these things called special projects. And that was like a new avenue for us, and I already focused on that last year. And then this year we started the drive campaign. Uh, Hen and Sophie sadly aren't here to present it, but we just want to talk about like what we've done for our campaign so far at least. And so the first thing that we did that was pretty major was that we did, uh, an event called, called DECA Date Night. Basically, uh, parents can go drop off their kids, uh, the, I forget what the ages is.
Uh, it's normally like three and up, three and up, anyone who can use the bathroom on their own.
So parents bring their kids.
Good call.
We host them, you know, at the school, uh, and they get to do different, stuff like that, it's kind of like Galaxy a little bit. So we get to hang out with them, you know, play games with them, do different activities, eat them dinner and stuff like that. Um, and then meanwhile, the parents can actually take a break, you know, humor being exhausted parent. Gets to have this safe piece. And then, yeah, and the parents can come, they go back up and yeah, it's pretty favorable for parents as well. And so, like, as well, like.
And so yeah, so Thrive is like an overall DECA advocacy campaign. And it involves like us, like DECA council and DECA members, like getting involved within our community. So as Joey said, DECA Date Night was one of them. Another thing we did was feed our serving children, our entire DECA chapter. And then we've also been working at the school store and I think we've got another volunteering thing coming up at a basketball game. So we're very like Thrive is about being involved within the community and that's kind of been our focus this year for DECA council. And then, so DECA from last year, our state, um, state.
Competition.
Yeah, so it's three days and it's two nights down at the Hyatt Regency in Minneapolis. Um, we go there Sunday afternoon and then we stay over Sunday night and Monday night. And then the final award ceremony happens on Tuesday. Um, at state there are role play competitions, research projects, chapter projects and clusters events and then, uh, cluster exams. And then these all take place on Sunday and Monday. And then there's an award ceremony Monday night that determines whether you final for your event. So then if you final, then on Tuesday you do your event one more time to see if you may get to nationals. And I want to say it's what, top four, five?
Yeah.
In each event, I get to go to nationals, which this year is in Anaheim, California.
And then like we kind of said, uh, so the award ceremonies that we're talking about, both are hosted at the Minneapolis Convention Center, which is two blocks away and, uh, everyone knows there via Skyway, so it's safe, secure access. Um, and then all our competitions are held within the Hyatt Regency Hotel. So, um, you know, you don't have to go out on the streets or anything like that to go to your events, it's all, you know, that we're staying in. And then also, uh, we have limited optional like group excursions. There's a few restaurants that's less than a block away from the hotel, there's like sushi train, uh, is it Fuka?
That's pretty close.
And then there's another diner as well, students can go there, it's, uh, less than a block away. We do also have volunteer, like adult volunteers that are required to go with these students if they want to go out and use excursion, as we call them.
Cool. So I'll take you around this. I'm going to take over for the last fun part about the money. Thank you guys, thank you for your help with that. I really want to highlight before I get into the board and stuff and ask for approval and then you all say yay. I really want to take one more moment to, uh, excuse me. Um, I just want to take one more moment to, to highlight all the work that they've done. This is my third year here, my first year was really establishing my need to what is DECA, how do I do all this, is the madness of it. And then the second year we said, what can we improve, what did we not do? DECA has so much to offer, how can we get more involved? And so we said, well, let's do these chapter-wide projects, these twenty-page papers, things that are community giving events. We're running that right now in the school where somebody is, where there's a team that is focused on, uh, making a food drive and giving back to the community that way. Um, there's another one that's doing a community awareness event, uh, at the middle school. Trying to teach, uh, some of our youngsters who are just getting their first cell phones, how to responsibly manage those from more experienced high schoolers that struggle with that as, uh, even adults can struggle with that. So that was our big focus last year. This year our big focus was on these thrive campaigns, which not only help us get more allocations to nationals, but help us ingrain our work even more in the community. So it's not just isolated to these business competitions that you, that you don't have much line of sight to and can't really see, but is proliferating throughout the community, trying to give back, trying to integrate DECA with what are the needs of the community? What do local businesses look for and some of that stuff? So it's been really a good experience as we try to keep taking the next step forward every year. I'm excited to see what I'll come back with next year for our next steps. Um, speaking of funding for state, there's a bunch of numbers up there. Essentially what it boils down to is it's about two hundred dollars per student and there's no cost to the district. Because it's going to be some combination of student contribution plus whatever fundraising activities we've done. So we've sold butter breads, the DECA Date Night proceeds go towards that. We've done a number of different fundraisers that have given us some money in the coffers, but then the students will also, um, contribute to that as well. And hopefully we have a little bit of money left over so that we're not completely broke when it's time to go to nationals and find all that money too. So, um, hopefully that answers any questions you guys might have, but I open up to you guys before you, um, say yay or nay.
Any questions? Very good, so in front of you, uh, for the item is the DECA field trip. This is open for approval and I would appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the DECA field trip.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, uh, there's been a first and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Post? And motion carries.
Yay.
Um, one last parting words, if you guys are interested to see more firsthand what DECA is, because I get off here and I just talk about it. But until you actually see it, it may not bring true what it is. We have opportunities open for judging at state, which could use, um, very experienced, you don't have to be a business wizard about it, but anybody who has some level of business experience, including something like the school board experience would be very useful for, for judging some of our events. So I will personally follow up and send you all a, an email link if you or someone you know might be interested in judging. Uh, it's a great way to see really what is it that, that these competitions entail? How do they really help our students prepare? And it's a, it's really good experience to go through, which our principal, Mr. Menard, went through at district, he was one of our judges, so. Yeah, I'd encourage you all to take part in that if you'd like. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Kenny and Joey, thank you for coming and good luck.
Yeah, one more round of applause.
We will move on then to FFA, field trip cover page. I think Mr. Ramstead is here, yes, very good.
I know, it's big field trip night.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for having us. Uh, briefly to share about our upcoming, uh, field trip opportunities for FA this spring. So, um, as mentioned, I'm Joe Ramstead, I'm one of the agriculture teachers in our district. Ms. Monica Pinkerman, um, was, was unable to attend this evening, but she's also joined us this year. Um, and we've had a lot of fun working with our students. Um, our mission statement as a department is up on the screen, we strive to offer hands-on, minds-on instruction and AFNR to produce globally-minded, um, citizens. So we are more than farming and we provide lots of different opportunities for students to engage with their food, fiber and, uh, resources. So within our, uh, department, we have this mission statement that we like to point out. Um, the, the big thing I like to kind of echo as we look at these three mission statements between the A department, the school district, and the FFA organization is this idea of building relationships, fostering lifelong learning and globally-minded citizens. The first event that we'd like to seek approval on this evening is the Little Eye Invitational. I personally have never attended a Little Eye Invitational. Um, I have fellow instructors that have taken students before. Um, quite frankly, I've never had students as serious or invested in, um, the competitions that we're hoping to bring students to this year, um, to ever warranted bringing a group. We have a group of, uh, freshmen and sophomore, uh, ladies and gentlemen, that are very excited about evaluating horses. Um, Ms. Pinkerman is very skilled with training our horse judging team, so we like to bring them there. And I'm very much into poultry judging, um, talking about poultry products and also live birds, and they have a poultry invitational there. So since we have two teams that are really eager about those events, we figured why not get a van and bring them down to get some experience? Go on a college tour, gain some hands-on experiences as they prepare for the state event coming up at the end of April. Um, so they practice in the events, we go on an industry tour of some sort on the way down. Um, and also tour the campus while we are visiting and recognize our award winners at the awards program on Friday afternoon. Um, this happens in South Dakota State University every year in working South Dakota. Um, and the hotel will be very near to the college. It is April fourth to the fifth, they would miss one day of school, um, we would leave after school the Thursday, the fourth, um, and then be gone on Friday, the fifth. Um, so I kind of talked about this previously, but this provides students opportunities to explore careers and possibilities after high school. Um, this would be our first time attending, so we'd be able to evaluate the value of the event and seeing if we want to bring more students in the future. Although it'd be fun to bring a whole busload of students, that can be very expensive. And since we've never been before, it would be a good way for us just to see if we would like to go to this again next year in the future. It's also again, good practice for students before their state events. Um, the costs, so the cost we estimate to be less than thirty dollars per student, I know it says fifty on there, but I crunched the numbers again this afternoon. Um, we had a very successful group sale this spring, so I feel like our, our chapter can financially support almost all the costs. Um, and this would just, this would pay for the student lodging, the registration and entertainment and also transportation. Um, the second event that we're seeking approval on is our state FA convention. So the event I previously talked about is an invitational, so it's for practice and gaining the skills and getting some more career and college readiness experiences. The state FA convention is something that we attend each year. Um, as of this morning, when I checked, we have over fifty-five students that have already qualified for the state event. Um, and events ranging from agribusiness sales to marketing plan, soils evaluation, poultry judging, you name it. We have students that are qualified in a variety of different events. Um, last year we brought fifty students, we're bringing even more students this year than we have in the past. Um, at the state FA convention, we recognize students for their accomplishments in competitive events. We have students exploring for career opportunities through workshops and events. Um, we also have a student running for state FA office this spring. Um, he would be the second person in Rockford FA history to be a state officer if he is selected. So right after I'm done here, um, I'm going to be heading over to the high school to work with him for another hour or so. Um, to get ready for those interviews that are coming up pretty quick. Uh, the event happens at the University of Minnesota Twin Cities and our hotel would be near the convention center. Um, we go to the same hotel every year, it's a really nice setup, they have free breakfast and everything for the kids and they're really good about working with us. Um, the convention is April twenty-first to twenty-third, so it's a Sunday through Tuesday, so students will miss Monday and Tuesday of school. Um, again, helps them get recognized for their accomplishments and their career development events. Um, we also are working on the hefty national chapter award application, so as the DECA group mentioned, we also have something very similar in FFA called the National Chapter Award, where students work on accomplishing fifteen quality standards, as we call them, ranging from environmental literacy, agriculture literacy, leadership, and they meet these different standards through hosting events or trainings for our members. So they've been working very hard on that application. Last year we were ranked number one and number two in the state because we're two separate FFA chapters, so we're hoping to keep that streak up again this year. Um, and also the state convention provides new learning opportunities for all. Um, the cost, we estimate to be about fifty dollars per student for the two days of lodging, registration and entertainment. Um, thanks to the fundraising efforts that we've had throughout the year. At this time, I'd like to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Rams?
Just to be clear, it's zero cost to the district?
Correct.
I'm all with that.
Excellent, so no other questions. So in letter six F, we have six F one and six F two, um, state FFA convention, college tour, as well as the little one competition. I'd appreciate a motion to approve, uh, both field trips, please.
Going to do them as a group?
Are, are you?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yep, very good.
I'll make the motion to approve the requested FFA field trip number one, um, to South Dakota State. And then field trip number two, which is the annual convention, um, at University of Minnesota, as presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Edwards, there is a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, there's a first and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor by aye.
Aye.
Post? Abstentions?
One abstain.
Thank you very much and the motion does carry, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, we will pull in then, uh, robotics field trip, we will call back up, Ms. Holly Kimble.
Yay, so I have to apologize, I don't have the fancy slides.
You already had your fancy slides. And in person.
Right, and a full demo, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm.
So you're good.
Nice. Oh, so I'm Holly Kimble, coach for first robotics competition. Um, we are asking for approval to do an overnight in Duluth, uh, next weekend. We actually have a scrimmage coming up this Saturday at Milmer, so the team is working really hard to get their robot running. Um, in Duluth, it's our first competition, so our yearly budget that we receive from the school covers the registration and the basic robot parts. That's all been, um, approved and paid for so that we can go to Duluth. And then, um, the hotel for the eleven students and three mentors and bus driver they're going. Um, the students will be paying a hundred and thirty dollars apiece unless their, um, fundraising has eliminated that cost. So there's a lot of students that started back in August and did a ton of fundraising, they don't need to pay for it because they were at all the fundraising events. And then there's a couple of students that didn't go to as many, so they'll pay the hundred and thirty. Everything else will be covered through our sponsorship and fundraising, so no cost to the district. Uh, we will use the district busing to go up, a fun free hour drive and bus, yay, anybody want to come with me? Um, and then we leave Wednesday after school. Um, we get up there and for what they call a load-in, so we got to bring their robot in, make sure all of our parts and stuff are set, um, in order to compete the next day. Thursday they do all-day inspections, um, then we do a couple of practice rounds just to get the kids used to the field. And then we have competition Friday. And then Saturday in the morning, we finish that competition and then do the finals. Um, we will send you a link so you guys can all watch us on Twitch, so you can see us while we're up there. Um, you will find a very large group of robotics parents on a stand screaming and yelling. I'm told I have a very high voice. You can hear me from anywhere in the stands, so. Um, that's our goal. Um, the kids, like I said, they've been working super hard. I spent two hours last night going to different shops to find more parts so that we can make sure that we can do all of the various components. Similar to the small robot you saw today, um, our competition is shooting what they call notes. It's a round, orange, it's kind of like somebody took a pool noodle and stuck it together. Um, they have to shoot it up above them into a, they call it an amp, but into a box. And then there's another spot where they place it in the box. Um, and then there's some programming that they can do to earn extra points. And at the end, they're supposed to be able to climb onto a chain. They pick the entire robot up. So I have parts coming for Friday because we're going to try to do that as well. So it should be pretty exciting for the kids. Um, the ones that went to Worlds last year understand the process and they were very good this year about creating agendas and making sure they did the fundraising, they've asked sponsorships. We even have flair, we have buttons, we already have our shirts this year, so, um, they work really hard to make sure that they've been systematic about how they get there. So we would appreciate your, um, approval to go out to Duluth.
Thank you so much. Um, so this, schedule for this is pretty much set, right, year to year to year, we know?
Yes.
Okay, the only thing I'll ask is you leave on the twenty-eighth. So you bring. If you bring this sooner next year, that would be great.
I would love to. I, um, unfortunately, I put the busing in and forgot the approval part, so I apologize.
So, just, just in the future, next year?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
We will make sure we bring it along.
Appreciate that, 'cause if there's questions or things, we don't have another board meeting to approve it.
Gotcha.
So, just saying.
January, January board meeting.
Yes.
I could even probably bring it to December.
Very good. Thank you so much. So, any other discussion or question?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, two questions. Um, one, how is the robot being transported up to Duluth this year?
So, we will use the trailer. I know last year we had the Rockford trailer.
On the back of the bus?
On the back of the bus. So, um, last year we had a little mishap. Um, the trailer was not in a great shape in general, and that's all been fixed. It's really, really solid, and we've used it for another competition already in the fall, so, um, we're very confident that that'll be not a problem, but that'll be no fair to that, I think it'll be on the bus.
Everybody on the bus.
Yep.
Um, one other thing that we will need a modification to, we'll have to approve the modification tonight, since there is no room left to bring this back. Um, on the field trip request form, it says that you will be taking public transportation, um, and that you do not need any school buses. Um, so we will have to.
Yeah, we don't need a school bus.
Um, approve that modification.
Thank you.
Or deny that.
You stole my question as well, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And because this is so tight, I didn't go over and talk to the bus team, they're waiting for your response, and they already have a track, they're expecting to be there next year.
All right, so with the modification for transportation.
To school bus.
Yep, to school bus. Absolutely. Okay, any other question? Very good, so with that, I'd appreciate a motion?
I'll make a.
With the modification.
I will make a motion to approve the robotics field trip with the modification of school bus over public transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for the motion, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon. There's been a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you very much. Field trip has been approved with modification.
One more question. Um, since I'm still learning this, when we go to Minneapolis and we're just going back and forth on the bus, do I still need approval if it's not an overnight?
Not from the board.
It's just approval for our bus.
Not from the board, it's from the building.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Before we go on to the next agenda.
Yes.
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, before we go on to, yeah, section seven of the agenda, I just wanna celebrate the entire section six that we just walked through. No joke. Um, like, just, I'm sitting here, watching all of these students come up, tell their story, the advisors, the adults that are, you know, they are with them, partner, I mean, it's just, it was like, it was the best. So, I just wanted to just take a minute to reflect and celebrate section six tonight, so thank you for that moment.
Absolutely. It's more fun with kids here.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Abson? Call you up?
Sure.
I know, right? Seven A, pack concur.
Yeah, yeah. So, the role I am sitting in front of you now is as the district liaison for the APAC Group, American Indian, American Indian Parental Advisory Committee. Um, this, uh, as a committee, I kinda push myself onto last year, um, and then as we've kinda redone things a little bit, um, that's the role I've taken on here at the district. So, my role, um, is as liaison, I'm not a voting member of the district, I am kinda the go-between between the committee, um, and the school district. Just very quickly, um, the, the funding has been ramped up quite a bit this year, as have the requirements for funding. Um, so, our budget recently was approved the second time through. Some of the things, most of the things I think that were approved last year probably would not have been approved under the new parameters. So, the state is really ramping up requirements, they ramped up the, the funding, but also the requirements for that. So, uh, there's a lot of really positive progress with this group. Um, we just finished up our meeting, um, our February board meeting. And with that, I will turn it over to, uh, Elizabeth, the chair of the Rockford American Indian Parental Advisory Committee, and my deserves.
Perfect. Hi, friends.
Welcome.
My name is Elizabeth Blackcock. I have been serving as the chairperson and a member of this committee, um, for, since the origination of, um, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee in this district, which was in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Um, since then, uh, we've had, you know, some growing pains or struggles, um, in, uh, engaging the student population, um, having parents involved in this. Um, I guess I should back up a little bit. Um, the purpose of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee is to advise the school district, um, and make recommendations on how this funding that this district receives should be spent each year. Um, to Jamie's point, um, the, the, the parameters on how we can use this money have changed, um, based on Minnesota Department of Indian Education Program, um, and with the increase in funding, so has that, the parameters of what can and cannot be used, um, or what you can and cannot use this funding for. So, um, anyway, our, our APAC group has, um, struggled to kinda become what it is today. We started in that first year and it was regularly two parents, myself and one other, showing up for Zoom meetings with, um, whoever, whoever was our leader at the time. Um, and we've gone through some, uh, some turnover in staff, um, and that has kind of led us to Jamie being our, our internal person, um, and I'm super grateful for that. Um, and now we're regularly attending, like, having six-plus families attending our meetings. Um, we've, you know, kinda changed when we're doing meetings, we're feeding people dinner, we have planned, um, a lot of activities, um, field trips, uh, daytime field trips, um, and some other activities to, uh, further engage these students. So, um, I'm here today because we are casting a vote, um, and I have that whole, you know, uh, thing I have to read, which is, I, it kind of is neither here nor there, but, um, I want to, um, we're, we're casting a vote of concurrence this year. Um, so, I'm just gonna preface that by saying that, um, our vote of concurrence is, uh, coming along with a recommendation. So, before I read that whole thing from Minne- or Minnesota Department of Education, um, I mean, I wanna recognize that we, as a district and this group, have made, um, uh, great progress and significant growth. Um, the advisory committee is casting a vote of concurrence, so we're agreeing that the district is, um, is listening to our recommendations and doing, um, you know, helping us achieve the things that we want to achieve as a group. Um, but with that vote, I would like you to accept this as our official, our official recommendation, um, to begin thinking about creating a role for an American Indian education liaison. Um, with an employee of the district, um, who can serve as a bridge between students, staff, families, and community members, we believe that this role can further the partnership between the APAC group, build deeper meaningful relationships with the students and set area, set Rockford area schools up to close the achievement gap that is currently present between our native and non-native students. Um, with this recommendation, we can provide a significant amount of funding. Um, up to fifty percent of our budget that we receive per year could be allocated to funding a role like this in our district. Um, and for example, this year that would be, um, about twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, and so this, we envision being a part-time position. Um, I've done a number of research type of things and have some positions that were posted in, uh, neighboring districts to kind of do some research about what this would look like, but our group as a whole would like to start discussing, um, you know, this as a, this, a thing we would like to go forward with, so. Um, I am gonna read the whole thing that I have to read, just because that's what they want me to do, um, and then I would be available for questions if there are any, so. Um, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution, whereas the school board or district has an APAC composed of parents, guardians of American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers and paraprofessionals, American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programming, and where American Indian representatives from community. Whereas the school board or district affords the APAC the necessary information and the opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the school and programs, um, whereas the APAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and district staff on Indian education program planning, and whereas the APAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the APAC concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota Statute Section one-two-four D point seven eight, and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of the American Indian students. So, that.
Thank you. Any question?
I don't have a.
Go ahead.
I don't have a question, but I just wanna say thank you. This group has taken off this year. Thanks to Elizabeth, thanks to Jamie. I've been to most of the meetings, and when I get there, the first night, you know, we get a couple of people there, and we get a table full of kids tonight, um, a whole board table full of parents, and we're making huge strides with their leadership, and I think also thank you very much for your work.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about my voice.
And you want to add one more thing? Um, every year we plan a spring, um, celebration, we serve a meal to the parents, the family members, and any student, um, any teachers or faculty that are available, and we would love to invite you to lunch with us. Um, I can have Jamie send you the date. That's all.
Uh, so just finally, um, wholly move before me, but, um, Jeff will sign off and school board chair will sign off, and then I will then submit to the state. Um, it's just asking on my March first, so.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Elizabeth, do you know, do we have any relationship with, I know there's tribe to the north, south, right? Do we have any close relationship with any of the tribal leadership in, um, in those areas to help? I really appreciated in my role, my advocate and my educational support when I was in the Oneida, um, serving in the Oneida Schools, um, to help fund more than your half. Is there any relationships that, that we could look at or grant funding for helping for Stefan?
This, um, I, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, to my knowledge, I, I don't have any relationships that I could tap into, um, whether or not the district, um, has some other, you know, connections, I'm not really sure. So, this is just something that, um, has kind of been, um, tossed around as an idea, um, and I think it's the right way to move forward. Um, I recognize that, like, when we talked about it earlier this year, that it wasn't a thing that we could dedicate, you know, half of our budget to this year, um, but I would like to start thinking about it for the future, um, so that we could, um, you know, potentially either partner with another local district who has a part-time person, um, you know, maybe making that a, you know, a shared type of role. I'm not sure if it, through Northwest Suburban District, there's a number of schools that have dedicated full-time liaisons, um, on their staff. Um, do they have recommendations on how to partner? I'm not sure, um, but that's kind of where I'm at so far.
Thank you. Appreciate, just was wondering.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and appreciate accepting the vote of concurrence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney, can we do a, the next two adjustments?
Yes, absolutely, we can do that. So, we are going to make an adjustment then to the agenda. Dr. Reddell Hoover, you were, okay, excellent. So, the stewardship of resources, because we really wish to have Melissa always have her last time. Always last.
Always.
We don't want to, yes, we do need a motion. So, there has been a request to modify the agenda, I do need a motion, and we do need to have approval for that to modify the agenda?
Yeah, so I'll make, oh, go ahead, go ahead. No, no, you go ahead. Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, adjust the agenda tonight and move item eight A, um, up to now, which is then behind number seven A, the APAC presentation. That would then, um, create, I guess, another seven, well, it would move, change seven B to be nine A technically, um, with another header of helping and supportive environment, and then adjust the rest of the headers after that. So, essentially.
Thank you.
Proposing, right?
Yep, so, thank you very much. So, the, the motion on the floor is to move seven B into nine A, and then move Culture of Collective Purposes down into ten?
Yep.
So, that is the motion on the floor. Can I have a second, please? I'll second that, thank you very much. So, there's been a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Post? Excellent, thank you very much. That has been approved, and Melissa didn't have a chance to vote to deny that, so appreciate that. So, we will then move on to the twenty-four five in, uh, planning and enrollment update with our CFO, Bridget Peterson.
Thank you so much for your flexibility this evening, um, and I'm happy to be here to present these items to you this evening. Uh, the first item that I wanna walk through and discuss with you is our FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget timeline. I thought now would be a good time to get in front of you, um, our plans that Dr. Reddell Hoover and I outlined, um, earlier in the month, and, um, where, where we are headed with this budget. So, um, here we are in February, as you heard earlier, the legislative session began her work on February twelfth, and I'll reiterate again, this is a non-funding year for schools, so we know exactly what we're going to get next year as it relates to the state agenda formula and some other, um, funding streams. That's not to say that new rules around some things that came out of this past legislative session may not be implemented, or they, they could give us additional funding, but we will wait and see. So, uh, we are moving forward with enrollment projections and trends that I will present to you next this meeting, so that work has been done. Uh, we will have, um, a discussion right now on budget assumptions, parameters, and timelines, we're doing that right now, with, um, more conversations in the coming months about budget assumptions and some parameters. Uh, you'll hear a lot about those terms as we kinda go along in this process. The staffing process has begun a little bit between just Jeff and I, it's pretty high level at this point, um, and most of that is based on those enrollment projections that we have. So, um, we haven't talked at all about who's and whatever, um, as it relates to who's filling what position, we've just talked sectioning and how many teachers, staff members primarily, licensed staff members, um, do we think we need. So, that work has, um, begun, like I said, I believe Jeff has distributed some information to principals, so we're, we're, we're moving. Um, and in this process, we are developing those preliminary budget assumptions. Again, there's that word. So, what are these assumptions? They are primarily the state laws. So, as I look at, you know, compensatory funding, what will we do with that? What are we assuming? Is it increasing? Is it decreasing? What are preliminary use numbers doing? Um, that's just, you guys, one funding stream. Um, it's kind of all the what we knows right now that I'm putting into these assumptions to, um, project revenue primarily first and foremost, and then after that, some expense assumptions will, will come into that. But there is, of course, the unknown. I can't tell you guys what utility costs are gonna be next school year. We have to make some kind of assumption, um, that you, you probably believe they're gonna go up. Do we believe they're gonna go up ten percent, or do we believe they're gonna go up five based on the last three years of history? Um, you know, this year, hopefully, we do see some savings in the mild winter, but that's not always the case. So, this is that volatile, volatility in budgeting, um, but we do need to make some assumptions around what we think certain expense line items will do, as well as our revenues. So, all of that has started moving into March. Um, we will continue primarily a lot of general fund work. You will hear next month at the board meeting, a financial update primarily on the twenty-four school year. Um, I will also bring, um, projections of what a revision in twenty-four looks like, as well as an FY twenty-five, high, high-level total revenue, total expense projection, and then I may be really risky and try to project out something for twenty-five, twenty-six, just so you can kind of see the trends of where we're trending. Okay, that would be, you guys, I honestly can't predict what's going to happen in four weeks from now, let alone three years from now. But to, in order to make, um, informed decisions and educated decisions as a board, I feel like it is important for you to see how enrollment trends play into the future years. And so that's what I want to walk you guys through in the future, next month, um, primarily. And like I said, please know that that's high level, not in the weeds or anything, but like I said, it'll, I'll get you guys there so we can see that and we can make some decisions. Um, those budget assumptions will be presented a little more in depth. You know, we use two percent on the state formula. We use this for the, you know, so I'll kind of walk you guys through all of that. The school sites early March will submit a draft version of their staffing, possibly as well as scheduling and all that. So that is probably already in the works right now and so hopefully have a lot of that finalized in March. More budget work will continue into April. I will then begin work, um, if not sooner, uh, on your community ed fund as well as food service, debt service and some of those. And I will bring forward to you then though, a draft of those budgets for twenty-five. Uh, I don't usually do a lot of projecting on those funds into twenty-six during, not like the general fund because those funds are not impacted as much by enrollment trends. But if somebody has a concern, I'm happy to dig in and so you'll see later the other funds, but these next couple of months will work a lot on the general fund. May, um, continue more budget work, but hopefully our, our goal is to bring you the twenty-four, twenty-five budget in May. With the idea that we have June as a backup date, but hopefully, um, we'll have a, an approved twenty-five budget in May. If all goes well. Um, the other thing I want to say too is the legislature adjourns in May. So you can see that we do all this work right now while the legislative, you know, session is in the works. And then we adopt a budget kind of at the same time. So there will, in funding years, it makes it really fun and interesting because we're trying to project and then they're not even final. And so, um, this should be, I don't want to say easy, but an easier budget twenty-five because we know so much about what the legislature has done. Um, it's the next year that's a lot harder. So any questions on that timeline? Walked through it pretty, pretty quick, but you'll be seeing a lot of me here in the next few months. Um, okay. So here we know questions. Um, I'll move into an enrollment update. So obviously I'm new here. Um, and so as I approached these enrollment projections, I, I found that my best approach to this was to probably use actual history, uh, numbers from MDE that were concrete, solid data, and then use trend analysis, um, to project what I felt like were enrollments. Enrollment future, I guess. Um, now there's a lot of things in here because I am new that I don't know a lot about. For instance, ninth grade. My, my past experiences tell me ninth grade has always been a, a hard grade to project. Um, it's a year when we see both positives and negatives. Positives, we see that influx from non-pub, um, you know, the private schools, wherever children come to us from ninth grade. That is also the year that unfortunately we can, you lose our, you know, eighth graders to other places as well. It's those, those breaks. Um, you guys are a little bit unique that your fifth grade is in your middle school, but typically middle school's another, you know, grade that, that first year of middle school is hard to project. And I like to usually use a lot, a lot of history and trends, but I did have a lot of that at my fingertips. The other one that is borderline impossible in a district or in a place where you have a lot of history is kindergarten. Okay, so with all of this, please know that I, I did my best based on the information that I had. Happy to, um, you know, I presented it to Dr. Reddell Hoover. I said, presented to your principals, presented to these people, presented to these people. I, I need more information if something looks amiss and whatever, but as I did this, and then Dr. Reddell Hoover and I worked together and, and you know, obviously I work with other schools. You guys, these trends that you're going to see unfortunately, they look like everyone else. So you're not alone in this. So I'm going to speak primarily from what I believe is the first page in your packet. It says enrollment history and projected total enrollment. Um, and so what you have on the far left side is your actual enrollment from the past. You can see you were hovering somewhere from seventeen to twenty in the mid sixteen hundred kid range. COVID came, we dropped down into the, you know, fifteen fifty range. We did budget this school year twenty-four for fifteen ninety-one. So we did increase about fifty-seven kids. I'm not sure where they thought those kids were going to come from or, you know, where, where this work was, was done. Because if I draw a line kind of across that graph, I would have been a lot more conservative and, but it's here and there. So that is our current reality and our current budget. You heard me last month say our current enrollment was at about fifteen fifty-seven. So we are below that fifteen ninety-one. Um, but that fifteen fifty-seven is kind of in line a little bit with where you've been since COVID. So then if I continue on this graph and we start to look at twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, and we go forward, what is happening? So my projection is fourteen eighty-five. It's really conservative. It projects ninety kids in kindergarten. Okay? Our current kindergarten class is about a hundred and five, I believe, a hundred and ten possibly somewhere in there. I'm sorry, I didn't write that number down. But the bigger piece of what is going on from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five is you will be graduating, don't quote me on it, but I think it's a hundred and twenty-seven kids, yes.
Yes.
And we're only projecting ninety. So you have right there what's called attrition. We're graduating more, losing more than we're bringing in. So thirty-seven kids, which is three hundred and, you know, we can do the math, okay? Then with the other thing that I'm projecting, and you'll see it in this packet, I'm not going to go through all of this right now, but you can see towards the back, I have your fall to the end of the year enrollment trends. I have a one-year average, a three-year average and a five-year average. These are actuals, you guys. What that means is in the fall, when we do the October one count, that's kind of that pick-up picture, everybody statewide takes that picture. And then the end of the school year, our trend is really good. If you look at our five-year average, anything above a hundred is good, anything under a hundred is, we're losing. But if you look at our one-year average, we're not doing as well as we were doing for the past five years. And so what is that telling us? And what, that's been some of my conversation with, with Jeff. Um, things we need to be aware of. Um, and then over one column on that last page is your migration. So what that is, is that's your retention. So as kids are here and they're a second grader, do you keep them into third grade or are you losing a bunch of kids? A better graph of that showing, um, you guys, sorry, I didn't page number. You, I was sending me a spreadsheet. I've been not preparing it as a board packet, so I'm sorry. It's the one that says ADM across the top. It's probably the third one from the back. There's kind of these green highlights and steps. That is your current, if you read it backwards, that's your current senior class. So you can see back in fifteen sixteen, when they were in third grade, there were a hundred and forty-one of them. And now we're only graduating or we've only retained and migrated that class specifically through our system and we've lost, I don't do math in my head very well, you guys. Thank you. Fourteen kids.
Excellent.
Just in that class alone, as we've migrated them through our, so back to that last page then, as you look at those migration trends, you can see again, five-year average, not a lot of numbers over a hundred percent. And then three in one year. So not the end of the world. But this is the work that we need to do as it relates to, to marketing and retaining our kids and, you know, talking with our families. And I heard tonight a lot about relationships. And so all of that you can see here as well wrapped into some of these numbers. My projections, I'm back on the first page again now, you guys, going out, you know, twenty-six to twenty-nine. Not assumes a flat ninety kids in kindergarten. So I mean, if, if we see something that changes, but then again, you know, next year, based on this year, we have a hundred and twenty-one kids in eleventh grade, we have a hundred and twenty-one kids in tenth grade. We have a really big ninth grade class. If we don't get more kindergartners, you know, these younger grades in here, this is our worst case. So what I've presented to you unfortunately is, is worst case. We can definitely make this better and do better. But it, it would be potentially where we're going. It doesn't incorporate any, you know, new, new build or new. Obviously you guys are not a landlocked school district. You have plenty of land to build and grow. But for right now, we felt like it was conservative to just keep K at ninety and then migrate the kids through based on some trends. Any questions on that? You guys, I know that was a lot.
Just a clarifying question because I know it's super hard to estimate. Um, so just with the K situation. So if we have a hundred and, did you say a hundred and ten right now? Ish? I think on the, oh, a hundred and five. That's an estimated, right? Okay. In the black box. So a hundred and five. That's the actual here is.
A hundred and five.
Hundred and five.
Yeah, calling it estimated because it's not final.
Fair, fair. Got it. Um, so what's the reason for the fifteen less kids in your kind of scenario building and all of that? Just.
Yep. So, um, we, I talked a lot about how many applications do you have today? How many, you know, like confirmed kids do we know about? Where are, and that number is substantially less than it, than ninety even. And the one good thing though is it is running a little higher than where it was last year.
That was going to be my question.
Positive there, but we feel like we can always add back. But right now, given our prior years of history and where we've been, and then as you look at, of course, this, you know, diamond bar here, we know twenty-three was a deficit. We're fearful a little bit of twenty-four around, we definitely know, I know because I've already prepared your revenue revision, that we were losing a couple of hundred thousand of revenue in twenty-four already because we, we didn't meet this enrollment projection. So revenue will be down another couple of hundred thousand for sure. So it felt more fiscally responsible to be uber-conservative.
Got it.
And we don't have a lot of capture rate data honestly in this district on our kindergartners. So that's what I'm trying to.
Say more.
So what do I mean by that? Exactly. So birth rates, we have, the district does have a demographic study. And so of those births, how many of those are we capturing? So let's say the first, I'm making it up, you guys, three hundred kids were born five years ago. That would come to Rockford potentially in twenty-five, so next year. So of those three hundred kids, are we capturing, well, we go based off his, we're only capturing a hundred of them. So that, whatever percentage that is, is our, our capture rate. And so I like to trend that and use like a five-year average. But because I, I don't have anything and I can't find anybody with a lot of the data, that's, you know, concrete, if you will, and comforting, you know, as we have more and more conversations, it felt better to be conservative.
Got it. Thank you.
I was just going to point out on the ADM one.
Yep.
That if you look at the last green, go up one. That is, because it's the same year next to each other. So just, it is at one twenty-seven, it's one twenty-one. That we shouldn't be comparing one twenty-one to the one forty-one students. Because the last two rows there are twenty-three, twenty-four, because you have adopted them, estimated.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Thank you.
So.
It's one forty-one to one twenty-seven.
Nope, to one twenty-one.
To ten.
So go up one because these are the same.
Oh, right on. Got it.
Just, just to.
Yeah.
Make sure we're looking at the data.
And go out, yeah.
Correctly.
There's even more though.
So just for the board's information.
I just wanted us to like really capture that. I mean, that's.
Well, I mean, actually it'd be down one if you're staying with the seniors. So it's from one forty-four to one forty-seven.
That's why I said it's actually more.
Yeah, one forty-four to one twenty-seven would be your seniors. This is for the current juniors.
Yep, but so I, I wanted to highlight that, like I said, so you can kind of visually see every year how you step a kid and how we migrate them.
For sure.
Um, see, Jeff, really quick before, I know you want to be chasing something, you know, Melissa. Um, the second page, I wanted to point this out for the board as well. This is my projection by grade in a graph. And the reason I wanted to do this is I wanted to tell you guys how extremely hard this is to staff. So your principals have hard work, right?
Very hard.
I mean, this is jumping and so I kind of even for my own visual broke your buildings out, you know, reams, RMS, RHS. And so this is all over the place. This is hard. This is really hard to section, to plan. And so that's where, you know, trying to project into the future and having us talking about the decisions we're making today. Because I'm certain some people would say if they knew some of this information a year ago, things would be different or, you know, we would make different decisions. So I'm really presenting this not to be negative, um, but rather to be positive and optimistic that we have, um, some opportunity with growing our K population and we have some opportunities to retain our one through twelve population, grades one through twelve population. So, sorry, Jeff.
Thank you, Bridget. As we look at this, I think the issue that we saw that occurred this year with the fifteen ninety-one, actually being fifteen thirty-seven, that's fifty-four kids at ten thousand dollars a kid. That's a big deal. So we are projecting very conservatively going into this year. We can always add staff and add sections. Once we finalize staffing, we're stuck. So we will be what I'm calling rightsizing our system in the next month or a month and a half for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We have to do that or we're going to be in a big world of hurt. I'll say it again. If we see more students coming to our doors in July into August, we can always add back. And we did that with the kindergarten section this year. And I hope that happens. One thing I want to say is this, and I know this board is as competitive as I am. I'm telling you right now, we are not going to see those numbers on the far right of that margin. Because we're going after kids and families because we're doing the right things for kids and families. We're going to try.
Thank you, Jeff.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So with using ADM and, and this is where I, I don't know, I just don't know if to ask a question. And following that from like grade school into high school, doesn't that actual formula change? It's like, don't you get more credit for like, or?
You get more funding.
More funding, but this is, this is a equal comparison between grades.
Like pupils.
Every, well, no, it's not because there's decimal points. So.
Yeah. So what that means is, yeah, so what that means is a kid wasn't here the whole school year. So they become a decimal place.
These are actual head counts.
These are actual, not head counts. They are the, the revenue generating dollars. So adjusted daily membership means how many kids were enrolled in Rockford from September one through, or whatever, you know, first day of school, last day of school. So how many, so if the kid was here on first day of school and last day of school, they generate a one point O. Or if they're seventh through twelfth grade, one point two, but I won't get into that. We'll just say one point O. Because the weighting is the.
That's what she was asking.
That's exactly what I was asking.
That's not what these decimal places represent. They represent just the true, everybody's a one point O.
Okay.
Head counting, if you will, head counting the kids.
Human being, not a.
Human current.
Thank you.
The average daily membership.
I just, I knew there was a one somewhere.
Yeah, because if a kid came in November and stayed through the end of the year, they'll generate, you know, a point seven five.
And I knew there was a way that we, in some other spreadsheet where people are counting different.
Totally different.
I just want.
It's a funding piece.
Right. Your principals care today about what their head counting.
Yes.
Because that's what they have to deal with every day. Because that's what they have to deal with every day, and that's what they have to staff off of.
So is that, so this is projection of actual student, right? And previously, we would roll over what current day enrollment is, and it doesn't look like you went from tenth grade to roll over to eleventh grade, eleventh grade to twelfth grade, like numbers to numbers, is that? Or is that the number that we see here?
So.
Is he asking, he just took ninth grade to tenth grade?
Did we just roll over?
No.
No.
We didn't roll up?
We, yeah, this is projecting. So I rolled everybody, so I took your kindergarteners, today, a hundred and five of them, and said, what usually happens from kindergarten, first grade in Rockford?
And we lose.
And you lose. So that's why next year, you only have ninety-nine kids. Because you're going to lose. And then.
Because historically, so for your knowledge, historically, we would just roll up. And we did not look at trends.
I'm.
Right, I'm just.
That's a, yes. That's what I'm gonna go with, because I think the front page tells us that.
Yeah, yeah, we would roll up.
Right. Who?
And then expect a hundred and a hundred kindergarteners.
Yeah, why did we, you know what I mean? So for three years, we've been fairly flat.
Yep.
What made us think, or what did we know that made us think we were gonna get fifty-seven more kids?
We were getting a new superintendent. He was gonna bring all these kids.
What, um, so you have these migration percentages here on the last page.
Yep.
Did you use one of these columns specifically for that rollover?
I did. You guys, this is a map, kind of massive spreadsheet, as you can imagine. And so I did. I used, um, see, I probably didn't include it. I used migration percentages, so the second to last page. You can see there, and then I averaged it. So it's, it's a bunch of formulas.
Okay.
But, yeah, I have, I only went fast, like I said. I mean, I could go back forever.
Right, yep.
I don't know if you guys, you, you don't, you don't want me to do that, right? We're, we're going forward, right? Um, and so that's where I got, and this is all right from MDE.
The other thing I want to share is, I know this isn't fun to look at. Bridgette did mention this is happening, and I mean everywhere. So I'm meeting at Masico this week. We had the conversation on this. Not on mentioned any districts by name. But some of the ones that we know very well are in the same or worse position than we are with this attrition. There's lots of reasons for it. I sent you an article a couple weeks ago, I think, on some of this. Here's an advantage we have. Bridgette kinda mentioned this already. There's valuable land. People have been saying, people haven't been coming for a long time, from what I understand here. We have work to do. We have a communications committee now established. I visited with, um, gentlemen, we're gonna do some PR work with. We're going after this. So we got, we got work to do, and it's not gonna happen overnight. We're not landlocked, so we're not stuck. The other part is retaining kids that already live here. And instead of having them go elsewhere, we looked at the attrition data today. Our outward migration surpasses our, our inward migration. That includes our north-east suburban, which we're a winner at. So there's another factor going on. And we need to make sure that we're letting the kids and the families know that Rockford area schools is the place to be, and we're gonna do that. So it isn't doom and gloom, and again, this is worst-case scenario we're looking at. We did that on purpose. Because we have to.
Jeff, to that point, just for the migration, in district, out district, all of that. And I think I mentioned this at a previous board meeting, but at some time in the future, like, I feel like every month, we get like the, the little sheet that says the ins and the outs and whatever. But like, we lack the visibility to the total picture of our opportunity. Like, it's just, it's piecemeal. It's a little this, a little bit that. So that would be a super helpful picture to have come back to the board, so that we can actually see, like, the whole, yeah.
And that's what Bridgette's talking about with capture rate.
Yeah.
Because we can see who's going in and out. In this month, three kids came in, one kid out. What we don't see is kids who never came.
Right, right.
And then, and that's a big number.
So that would be.
So that's our work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Bridget? Excellent. Parting, parting words? No?
None, I'm sorry.
Don't, don't be sorry.
The future is bright.
Right, that, that's, those are the words, right? We have, we have opportunity ahead.
Yes, we have work to do, and we're gonna dig in and do it, and.
Well, you have to know the headwinds in order to have a strategy to fly them.
Excellent.
The only, the only other thing I'll add, and I know that the, the odd presentation we did in January wasn't super fun. We're gonna see something like that again in December. Because of this. But we're not gonna see it the next December. And that's why we're doing this work now.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, you guys. I appreciate it.
All right, and we then can move on unless someone wants to make an adjustment to the agenda. Anyone else?
There are a few more places.
And, Mr. Or Zach, you wish to come back? No, I'm just kidding. All right, number nine A, Rockford Community Education Update, Back Into The Healthy And Supportive Environment.
Well, hello.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I feel like it's been a while.
Yes.
So, um, all right, I'm gonna just kind of go through my agenda here. Um, RCC updates. First of all, we currently have one thousand two hundred ninety-eight members. So, and our biggest chunk of that, nine hundred and ten of those members are family memberships. So that includes the parents and the kids. And the other, the second highest number, which I'm impressed with, because one of, um, our target groups that I've been really working on, um, has been the seniors. Really want to get seniors more involved in the community center and having activities and, and things like that, just because, you know, this is their community, and we need to have things for them to do. So we actually have a hundred and fifty-five senior memberships. Which is, which is very good. Um, with that being said, it was kind of exciting. I was at the Community Education Leadership Conference on, uh, Friday, Thursday and Friday of last week. And there was this little flyer being, that's sitting around. It was on all the tables, and it was just talking about what community education is and, uh, things that other, our places have been doing to like, that are special to community education. And I read through the first two, and then all of a sudden it said belonging was the word, the title. My friend next to me, she's like, Tammy, she's like, hey, I need your autograph. Like, what are you talking about? She's like, isn't that you, Rockford Community Education? They have used our, um, sweet and salty bingo that we have for our seniors as their belonging thing about how, like, after COVID, like, it just really had, like, spoke to them, and like, they were able to come and be, you know, social again, things like that. So that was pretty exciting. And, and then to see that number there, to see that, you know, in a publication for Community Education Association was, was pretty exciting for me. So, important to Jeff, important to Tiffany and Cody, so I was really excited about that. But, um, you know, we have other members, we have different categories, but those are the top two, so I thought that was, so. Almost thirteen hundred members, so if you're not a member yet, maybe we can add and get to thirteen hundred, so. Um, and that does include, it's kind of nice, um, staff, and I'm just gonna say, so staff right now, because they get the, you know, they could use the facilities for free unless, um, they pay if they wanna join the classes. So we do have a lot of staff members that do that, but we have twenty-one staff members that actually take advantage of the free use of the facilities, so. Um, pickleball. What's going on right now over the RCC? Those ten courts, let me tell you. Constantly, we probably get ten phone calls a day. Hey, do you have any courts available? Pickleball, pickleball, pickleball. So, um, Wednesday night's more popular than Friday. Right now, we have Wednesday and Friday night pickleball open play. Um, we had to have a waitlist for the Wednesday night, and Friday night's popular as well, but not as popular as Wednesday night. So, um, adding ten pickleball courts was an amazing idea to our, to the new floor. So it is getting, they are getting used. So, once I get a better handle on how to run things and all the rules, because I didn't know what the kitchen was, in case you don't play pickleball.
I'm all over that.
Okay, yeah. Not allowed to be in the kitchen, so, yes. I would like to, because I think it would, and actually be a fundraiser for a lot of these groups that could come in if they wanna help run a, a pickleball tournaments. Um, they, they can make some money, so. Um, next, equipment. Um, looking to replace some equipment. We have some out-of-order signs and, um, which is funny, we just talked about budget. Um, luckily, we, we do have a fund balance, and I actually just was talking to Dr. Jeff and, um, Bridget about it. Because it just, it's not a good look for the RCC to be having out-of-order signs on stuff. And a lot of that equipment was here before I got here, and, uh, August will be ten years for me, believe it or not. So, um, so we're looking into that. I got a quote. I'm gonna get another quote, try to get the best deal, and get some new equipment in there. Obviously, we can't replace it all in one year, but we can go step by step and hopefully get some new things in there. That'll be good for not just students and the phys ed classes that use the space, but also obviously our thirteen hundred members, so. Any questions on RCC? All right, community education. So our spring and summer brochure, I'm currently working on that, getting that out. We wanna get it in mailboxes by mid-April, because I know a lot of people like to have their summers planned as soon as possible. So, uh, we're asking for all information by, to have it in by March fifteenth, so then that way we can get it to publication and, and get it out to, um, in mailboxes. Um, some new classes, obviously, maybe outdoor club. So I didn't have that on my list until tonight, so we're.
Next year.
Next year. Um, but a new class that we've been having that I just wanted to mention was these flower hours. So like over, uh, the holiday break, we had like Make Your Teacher's Day, or Make Your Neighbor's Day, things like that. And they literally made little arrangements, like outdoor arrangements with ferns and stuff, that they could give to a teacher or a neighbor or a grandparent. Um, and we have adult ones of those too. We just had Galentine's instead of Valentine's, it's Galentine's, I don't know. Um, we just had that, we had six people show up for the adult one of that, but we have the porch pot class. Uh, there was a waiting list for that one. So these new classes, just trying to think of something different. So I always open it up. I, I open up to staff. Do you guys have a good idea, something you'd like to see, like, just please bring it to me, because we're always looking for ways to incorporate, you know, community into our community ed program and into our schools, so I always need help. So new ideas that we have, um, it's great that Deca was here and, um, Rachel's here. Because we're, uh, thinking, um, I had conversations the other day with some elementary teachers about doing summer community ed tutoring. So tutoring that are with our teachers, but we, um, put it together through community education. So, um, we kind of had our first initial, initial meeting. I think it went really well. And so look for that in the summer brochure. So that'll be really, really good for, you know, people just to get that extra teaching and tutoring and from our wonderful teachers, so. And then young entrepreneurs. It was actually supposed to start this, uh, winter, but we just couldn't coordinate it all, because it was kind of like a, just didn't have enough time. Um, but Deca's gonna help with that class. We're gonna have like a young entrepreneurs class. Um, and then that will be, they can present their business or their products at our expo, our community expo. Which by the way, is April twentieth this year. So Saturday, April twentieth is the community expo. Woo-hoo. So working on that with the chamber, as the president of the chamber, my, um, other job, so. Um, but look for those. Again, always looking for help. Outdoor club now, and, um, Deca mentioned tonight, and I just wanna throw this out there, just for anyone who's listening, you guys. They, they talked about their Deca date night. Their next one is actually March first. So I also help with that. I send out on Infinite Campus. I do send out, uh, to help them, you know, just get. They, they do all the registrations. They do everything for it, you know. I don't, I just send out an email to let people know and put it on the RCC Facebook page, so they can get people in there. Community education questions? Okay. And then last, but not least, I just wanna talk about wellness. Uh, I'm on the wellness committee, and we've been trying to do monthly wellness things. So, um, like, um, January was jumping January, and we had, um, uh, one of my fitness instructors from the RCC, she led a fitness class in the morning and afternoon. She offered two different sessions, so in case you're a morning workout person, unlike me, or, you know, an afternoon person uh, that likes to work out. And then we did Focus February, which we just got done with. Um, it was on mindfulness and Suzanne Wagner, so she's also a parent in the district. She came and, yeah, she's, she's really, really good. And she came and spoke, she did one in each of the schools. Um, just kind of met with the principals and stuff like that. So those are going great. We did porch pots in December. I mean, it's just kind of, just something to kind of get the staff to do some wellness fun activities, mental health, physical health, um, all those kind of things. So I gotta do my March one now. I don't know. I'm thinking about some sort of nutrition. I'm calling it like munchy March or something, but I don't know. So if you have any ideas for that too, that'd be great. And then, um, because of this wellness, I did apply for an education foundation grant and got it. Um, did not realize that, I thought it could be used for all of these wellness activities, but it actually has to be used for one vendor, because I didn't really know how to apply for one, but now I know. So one vendor, so now I'm just, I'm gonna be sending out a survey to all the staff, the, the, um, property or school staff. Because, uh, some of the ideas I had is we used to do, go golfing on the last day of school, the half day, and the second half of the, yes, it was a lot of fun. When I first got here, that's what we did. Um, so golf, and take a chair massages, maybe having a speaker. I'm just gonna kind of throw out a, a survey to the staff to find what they might like the most to use that grant for, so. That's it. That's my report.
Any questions for Melissa?
Maybe I missed it. Did you mention the preschool fees?
I did not. Totally missed that one. Probably the most important thing on this agenda for me.
Just so it's.
I'm, I'm bumping it back, you know, to last, so. Um, yeah, preschool fees. So as we all know, rates of everything are going up. So we've tried very, very hard not to raise them terribly after COVID. So we did raise our preschool fees ten dollars a month in nineteen twenty, so it was before COVID. And then in twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we did another ten dollars a month. Um, and now for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it's an average, an average of actually forty dollars a month. It, it's needed for everything we're doing. And the other thing, and not why I say average, is before, we just did ten dollars a month, no matter if you were doing two days a week, three days a week, five days a week, half day, full day. Um, if you look at our rates from a long time ago, before I even came, we're not really sure. Tiffany and I weren't really sure how they did them, because they didn't really match up per session. And we want those per session rates to be somewhat equal. Obviously, if you're going five days a week, it's gonna, it's gonna cost a little bit less, just because certain reasons and stuff beyond my math brain, but, um, we wanted to even it out a little bit. So the average is actually forty dollars a month, but with that being said, we are still in the middle of surrounding schools. So we're in the middle of the group as far as prices go, with, even with that, um, those fees being raised. So like, we're still lower than Delano, we're still lower than Wayzetta. We are higher than Buffalo and St. Michael, but that's because they get a lot more public funding than, than we do. They get a lot more just funding, so they're able to keep their prices a little bit lower. But we're not significantly higher than them. I mean, you'd spend just as much, you know, driving your kids over to Buffalo or St. Michael in order to get that break on the, on the price, but. Um, and one of the other things that I feel okay about this, and, and the other thing I've talked to, um, Dr. Rado, who we're about, is we, I would like to, and it's part of like my goals, is to make sure that this school district is seen more as a pre-K to twelve school district, rather than just a K through twelve. Even though, because sometimes preschool just kind of gets moved in, and it is a community education program, don't get me wrong. But we have licensed teachers here, you know, that, that, that's, and now they all have to be, but not every school district has that. Not every, you know, place, even in the area, has that, like, you know, private ones, so. And ours are amazing, and the transition from pre-K, from our preschool to kindergarten is just so much easier when they're actually here. So even though our fees are going up, it's, it's good, because we have so much to offer here.
So, even though our fees are going up, it's good because we have so much to offer here and that's what we're gonna start marketing is what an amazing preschool program we have with our teachers and all the things that we can do and having it in-house right in our very own elementary school, so. Thank you for catching that. Department of Johnson.
Right, any other questions for Melissa then?
Gordy, so where are they here, you call me Melissa?
I know.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for being flexible and.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, let's move on to number 10 now. Culture of Collective Purposes, 10A, Learning and Innovation Report. Wait for a drink and then.
All right. This is the night of presentations and I know I was, we're doing well, our meetings are short, this has been a great meeting, I know it's long, but it's been a great meeting. Just want to share a few things here, what's going on with our Department of Learning Innovation, I'm super excited that Rachel set to this whole meeting because she's been a big part of the READ Act work we've been doing as our literacy co-lead with Polytrandle, so. Just want to show this slide that Kathy showed last time, and it's really about our mantra of continuous improvement, and we're gonna see a lot of this throughout our system, the Plan Do Study Act model, infusing our built, and then all the things that we're looking at doing. So, you've seen this slide before, I want to show you a couple of things here that are important, and you've probably heard this before. And I want to say again how important this is. I've been in systems, we probably all have, where there's millions of great ideas and they all commit people at one time. We're gonna go real slow, we're gonna go to do things really, really well and build a clear foundation, so again, we're gonna go slow to go fast, and we are gonna build this foundation. We're gonna be rolling this out to our staff, our teaching faculty in April, and what we're talking about is taking three things a year and getting really, really good at those three things. Not overwhelming our system, and we're gonna start with standards, so as we talked to the system where we are with standards, and they said we've started and stopped that work so many times, we can't even count, and we don't really know where we are with them. So, if some might say, we've done that, my answer will be great, then this will be really easy for you. Learning targets. I've actually done personal research on this, but the research is clear, if we're transparent with our kids during instruction, they will learn. They need to know what they're learning, why they're learning it, and we need to talk about it frequently. And then the assessment piece, so the idea of having common assessments throughout the system, in a smaller system should be pretty easy because for some people, it's one class. But we need to have a way of measuring things, and so we're gonna be rolling this out as we go, and we actually have the next three years planned too, but we're not gonna go with that to start. Man, I sound terrible, sorry.
Drink more water.
I'm trying.
Batty better fill that a few times.
The READ Act, some of this might be repetitive, and I'm thankful again for Rachel because she's been a point person for this. As you know, the state pushed out three approved professional development programs. There's one from U of M that you guys talked about and she's not a fan of, then there's Core and there's Letters. We are gonna be utilizing Core for those who need to be trained. With that being said, here's where we are. I'm calling this the Rockford waiver, because I think I've talked to the Department of Ed, I don't know, maybe 100 times since I started, about the fact that we've already done training in Science of Reading through this being in Orton-Gillingham. And they finally came back, I don't know, was it a couple of weeks ago, Rachel, and said, okay, no mas, give us, we gave you a waiver, we're gonna go, we're gonna produce a waiver. So, it was sent out to us first, I think a couple of our schools have looked at it, most schools don't even know it exists. Rachel filled out our waiver, we went through it and submitted it on what, Friday afternoon? We got it back today, do you want to speak to that, do you mind?
No, no, no problem. Can I sit here?
Yes. We're informal.
Thank you.
I didn't even know you were gonna be here tonight, so, great.
Yeah, so the waiver was sent in on Friday, sent in on Friday to my good friend Jim, and it came back today with additional questions, which I thought I was quite thorough in my response.
Your original response?
Yes, so I have, we'll be sending in additional response just to the questions, and they're just real general questions about the training that our teachers received, what it's being used for, do they have certificates, things like that. So, the training is really conducive to the work that we're doing in all the tiers of training with literacy in our classrooms, so being cohesive in our language and our approach is utterly important for literacy success for all of our students K through 12, pre-K through 12.
You know, and it says Rachel's here, I just want to say this too, I know Brett had talked about this, we started day one with the Science of Reading work and literacy, and Rachel's done a tremendous amount of PD in our system already, I'm thankful and it's working. So, we're in a really good spot. I would be, I never want to say shocked, but I would be surprised if our waiver is denied. It could be, but I'm very hopeful. In fact, one of the things they asked is do you have a, a assessment protocol, because the other ones do, you have to pass with. Rachel created one, so, because Orton-Gillingham does not have one. So, we've done everything we can, and so, I actually mentioned the waiver to some folks yesterday about eight different super tenses, they said, no way, and I'm like, yep, we're trying for this. They said, if you get it, you're really lucky. Well, I think we should get it because we should get it, but I will share a couple of things here. This is right off the READ Act, I'm on the Department of Ed's website, it's hard to see. Phase one trainer, trainees, phase two. I think I have a slide in here, yeah, this is a better one, okay, so this is those who have to be completed by 2025. I'll let you just take a look at it here. So, that group primarily, especially looking at the elementary level, all but two of our elementary teachers are fully trained. That's huge. Yes, with the, get some people trained through the system, I'm gonna go through the training, Kathy Mattson's gonna go through the training and a few others, but we're gonna be in a really good place assuming this waiver goes through, and we hopefully find out tomorrow or the next day. There's a few additional staff that'll need to get trained by 2027, and this is those folks. So, we're in a good place assuming this waiver goes through, if it doesn't, it makes it more challenging. The state does have money for professional development reimbursement, it's actually not a reimbursement, it's straight through the state, they pay for it. They pay for the training, but not the teacher's time. So, if we did it outside of the date, it's on us to train, they just pay, it's really expensive. Another good reason why if the waiver goes through, we're in a much better spot. Other, go ahead.
Just, can you go back to it real quick?
Yep.
Are our the EL teachers currently, are they trained on this currently?
I'm gonna pass it up.
Yes, all of, all of the elementary school staff, so all of our English language learners, English language learning staff, all of our special education staff, all of our classroom staff.
Aside from the two.
Have all been trained in the Orton-Gillingham approach.
Now, the EL, I'm just curious, the elementary, do they work in other buildings or do we have separate?
For, or.
EL?
Yeah, there is one who has two buildings that she works in.
Okay, I was just curious, because to me, I look at that and I'm disappointed that the state would say by 27, to me, those kids, that would be so important to have that language, that common language, especially with those EL students.
Yeah.
I just think that that'd be so important, so I'm happy to hear that they are already trained in that, I think that's super important, so.
And I actually might ask Rachel to comment this too, what we haven't yet talked about is curriculum, talked about pedagogy and things like that, and I know there's even many emails today around, you know, which ones does the state approve, which ones should we look at, that kind of thing, so. There's 135 million set aside, I think, for curriculum statewide. We don't want to bypass it, you don't need to buy curriculum. We probably will need to eventually, if we can tap into the state, that might be a good idea. We are still unsure which avenue we go if we went that route though. Anything you want to add on that at all?
I will just say that the state has approved a few different curriculums, so they have a foundational literacy curriculum, so that's your phonics, your phonological awareness, all those things, and then they have approved a knowledge building curriculum, so your vocabulary, your comprehension, and then they have also approved a set of all encompassing foundational and knowledge building curriculums. It's not very many, and they've, they have some reconsideration lists that should be coming back the end of February, beginning of March, so we'll be able to see if the ones that are currently approved, do they fit our students, do they fit the direction that we're going in, if they don't, then we can have a wider range of curriculums to look at, because we have an ed curriculum, I think it's been about 10 years.
That's time. So, one other news, I'll go through this quick, as already mentioned, I want to thank her back, they've been fantastic. We did submit our media report for AdSIS, that went well, I spent quite a bit of time with Jennifer Sprague on that, she submitted for us officially, I think, two weeks ago. You can't really read this, but Kathy and I have been putting together our workflow plan up into June, what we want to get done. So, we have some, some work going on, it's really productive, I want to really do another shout out to Kathy, you know, I talked to her, I said, you know, I kind of tapped her on the shoulder to do PD with me, and it blossomed into this, and so, we are, we've become very tight, we think a lot alike and want to get done. She has a great deal of political capital with our system, which is huge, there's a bunch of trust there already, and so we're doing some, I think, some pretty cool work together, and I'm very excited. Her role is expanding next year, just want to make sure you guys knew, she, you know, she will be, the plan now is for her to be a .5 at high school and .5 here. She's already moved into the office across the hall, by the way. Oh, jeez. She's coming over in the afternoon and spending some time with me already, so. That's what I got. Thank you.
Any questions on the DLI report? Very good, we'll move on to 10B with the strategic plan and the one pager.
This is really fast, you've all seen this, for the crowd, we have a one pager now, based on the work that you guys did. I've shown this document to several people, they're pretty impressed, and so I want to thank you for your work, we're gonna be having stacks of these at our offices and things like that. See, grab, it is online. Thank you. This is a, this is a big deal, it's kind of who we are, so thank you for that.
I'm sorry, I lost my thing. Any chance we could put any of that in the brochure, I mean, do you have a brochure?
Yes, tomorrow you can.
Excellent, all right, thank you for that. The next item is the Iowa Reauthorization Resolution. I see Courtney is going to be listed as our Iowa.
Yeah, it's just the renewal of it.
This is something we have done every year, so I would appreciate a motion for the approval of the Iowa reauthorization.
I'll make the motion for the Iowa renewal authorization.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and a second. Eric Gordy will second then, so there's been a first and a second, as this is a, any discussion? As this is a resolution, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jenny Neely.
Aye.
Amy Edwards.
Aye.
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Jamie Hilstrom.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Excellent, thank you very much, and Ms. Prescott is absent, so then we will go into 9D Policy First Readings, you can see that there are many there, anything from the Policy Committee for call out on that?
Uh, no.
Very good. Any questions from the rest of the board about nine, or sorry, 10D Policy First Reads? Excellent, then we will move on to number 11, Community, School and Family Partnership Contributions and Donations from the Board, Dr. Rado.
We have four rocket boosters, eighty-two fifty for girls' basketball activities, box tops, seventy-seven ninety, Reams Gift Fund, Renee LaBloom donated a woman's winter coat to the middle school, and an anonymous donation of $93 for the high school band and choir trip activity fund.
Thank you so much, we're very grateful for the gifts for our community, and I would like a motion for acceptance.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution of acknowledgement of contributions and donations.
Thank you, Ms. Neely, and there is a motion and a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, first and a second, any further discussion? Resolution, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jenny Neely.
Aye.
Amy Edwards.
Aye.
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Jamie Hilstrom.
Aye.
But Prescott absent.
Excellent, thank you so much, that takes us to the end of a lot of the items, but 11B Finance Committee Meeting Thursday, February 29th, 8:00 AM in the District Office Boardroom, Board of Ed Work Session Monday, March 18, 5:30 in the District Boardroom, regular meeting following at 6:30 in the Boardroom. Then we will move on to 10C with Board Committee Updates.
Do we want to stay on the calendar for a moment?
Yep.
Do you want to talk about April?
Yeah, we have two conflicts in April. I don't know, Eric and Amy have a conflict for sure. We are at Corecurn then, that Monday, so if the Board is okay, I can see if we can move to Wednesday, the 17th, or if the Board would prefer, we can keep Monday there and just, because we still have a quorum. Jenny works Wednesdays, so it's challenging her to switch days from Monday to Wednesday, she did for tonight due to President's Day, she's willing to do one or the other. May is also a potential conflict, we can talk about that later or just leave it, but I don't want to ask Jenny to change her work schedule three times in a six-month span. So, I'm gonna open to you guys since I can't talk anyway.
Yeah, so, and thank you to Ms. Edwards for lifting up, she lifted up that she will have a conflict during the April Board Meeting, unable to attend, as will I, not be able to attend the April Board Meeting on Monday as scheduled, so neither of us would be in attendance. So, we're, we had communicated previously that if these things do occur, we would have the opportunity to move to Wednesdays. So, that would be for Wednesday, I think the date was.
Seventeen.
Yeah, April 17 would be here, so.
I can do either April or May.
You can.
Like one or the other.
One or the other, okay.
What, can we talk about the conflicts that are in May?
It's tentative at this time, so it would only be myself at this time, that I know of, I don't know Amy if you have anything, but.
I don't.
Yeah.
That's is available on the 17th.
Very good.
I did check with her, so, on the 17th of April, so April we could, Jamie, what about you?
Yep. I can do that.
Excellent, so tentatively then moving our April meeting to that, Wednesday, would you mind calling Corecurn?
Absolutely, I'll do it tomorrow.
And if they can't, then we just do it here, and we find another day where we can get to Corecurn.
Yep.
Maybe July or something. Just May and June are kind of.
Always busy.
Yeah.
Always busy.
Yep.
Excellent.
And then May, the 20th is a conflict for you?
It's a potential conflict right now.
Potential conflict, correct.
And I would, if you guys want to move it, I'm okay with that because I have a conflict in too, but moving it to Wednesday doesn't help me, so it doesn't matter.
In, in May, I would have a conflict on Wednesday, of that same week, if we did the week before though.
The 13th?
I looked at that, the only conflict I saw, I think, do you have North Suburban?
Uh, we could move that, or there's a vice chair that can take care of that.
So, if we did the 13th, just bump it back a week?
I wouldn't be able to attend any of that.
But you can't.
I would, so the 20th is tentative, so let's just leave Wednesday, the 20th as is at this time.
Or Monday, Monday the 20th.
Sorry, Monday, oh, Monday the 15th, yeah.
Wednesday the 15th.
Wednesday the 15th would, and quite honestly, I would appreciate that greatly because of graduation coming up as well.
For which one, Eric?
If we move the May one. Just saying, I mean, I know the district has a ton of stuff going on and that.
But moving it to where?
May 15th.
May 15th, yeah.
Well, we've already, like, if we're doing Wednesday in April, we should.
But if I'm the only one that has a conflict on May 15th?
Okay.
I don't know yet.
Jenny, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with not attending the meeting on May 15th.
But the 20th right now is possibly my conflict.
Yeah, 20th is just a tentative, so that would.
Why don't we just wait?
I'll just, I would love to be able to go watch my kid play baseball that night as a night game in a Tanka, but it's my job, so I'll be here if you have that.
No, and I. No, I, and I agree, that's an important thing, and we should respect that as well. And my conflict, it's probably the first game of sections on the 20th.
Right, can we discuss this next month?
Yep, absolutely.
Just because more schedules will be a little bit more solid next month, and let's discuss next month.
That's kind of timed by me.
Well, for sure the April one, we're moving, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's the best, I like, yeah.
So it'll be at Corcoran, it'll be here, and then we can discuss May at the March meeting.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I apologize for my voice tonight, everybody, I'm sorry.
You don't need to apologize, that's all good.
You know, you don't have to apologize for not feeling well, so I appreciate you being here. Board Committee updates, usually calling someone, but I'll just go.
I'll go. You go, you go, you go, you go, then I'll go next.
You go?
No, you go.
That's like a...
Somebody, please go.
All right, no, we want to wait till 10, be old time, no. So coming through, a couple Finance Committee meeting, sorry, yeah, had a Finance Committee meeting, had a...
We did.
We did not, March 29th, was that February?
March.
We have one on February 29th.
February 29th, well, I don't, I haven't been at a meeting for a while.
It's not February 29th yet.
Good God, it's late. I meant to say District Operations Committee. How's that? Had a couple Board Prep calls for the work session, for the regular meeting with, with Ms. Edwards and Dr. Ritaluber, also was able to listen in on the AMSD legislative session. And again, don't expect any additional funding, right? It is, it's not very likely to happen at all. I did have a couple MSBA chats, you know, listening coffee conversation, as well as some board chat, the last board chat was very intriguing. There was a new board member who is also the chair, because their whole thing turned over, and there was a very lively discussion about making sure you do board work and stay in your lane. So he was, there were some people that were very vocal back at him to say, you need to do your job, your job is board work, governance not, and if people are coming to you thinking that they want you to drive their bus, tell them to follow the chain of command, period. So, don't even take those comments in, say, did you call, and leave it at that, it was, it was, it was pretty aggressive, so, just saying, if you want to go to one of those, it's, sometimes they're fun, so, that's me. So Amy, you're on.
I know. So, yeah, really quick update, just finished up negotiations, which we ratified the contract or, you know, voted on that tonight, and I echo Jessica's thoughts from earlier this evening, so thanks for speaking on behalf of the whole team. It was incredibly positive and just a really solid and good experience, so that was good to get that done. District Apps Committee, just super helpful, which reminds me, I feel like we need to get more on the books, maybe? Maybe not? Think we're going to be monthly, so just, it's on my radar, like, okay, we met, and then, yeah, so, but just helpful to get that kind of off and running again, and then just, yeah, just one of the board props, so those are my general updates.
I'll go. Doing safer health to school still, we had the, as MJ said, we had the Community Ed Advisory Board meeting, or actually, I don't even know if you mentioned that, but that was a couple of weeks ago, maybe, and she covered most of the stuff, but one, a couple of things that stood out to me during that meeting was, so ECFE as a whole in Minnesota celebrated its 50th anniversary recently.
Oh, wow.
And then I asked Tiffany, what about Rockford? And she looked it up, and she got back to me a couple minutes after the meeting ended, and she said, we've had ECFE in Rockford for 38 years, so 38 of the 50. I thought that was pretty cool.
It's very cool.
And one other thing I thought was pretty cool was Cody from Galaxy, they are enlisting middle school students to volunteer to help the older daycare students with tutoring and homework help. So it's a very cool kind of everybody helping everybody kind of deal, so I really like that. Other than that, I think that's all I have.
So thank you, Ms. Nealon, any questions for Ms. Nealon? No? All right, Ms. Johnson?
Couple of negotiation meetings, glad we wrapped that up. Again, I just, it was a good experience, great group to work with, they, they were very professional throughout the entire process, and were able to make their needs heard very clearly, which was appreciative, and they heard us as well, which was really nice. And then I had a continuing Ed Committee meeting last Friday morning, and it's just virtual, and I just, Kevin Neff is amazing, he has an agenda, and he gets you through that, it's in the morning, 7 o'clock, and you get in that meeting, and he just goes, and you're plugging through a 7:20 meeting or something like that, but you just plug right through, it's awesome, and he, he really knows what's going on with licensure, and Dr. Jeff was on the call as well, and provided good information to answer questions from the teachers. They discussed making sure that we have the right trainings or CE's available to our staff within a five-year period, so that everybody has what they need to renew, and I appreciate that a lot, that we are conscious about that for our staff, that's very much appreciated. Kevin's on top of knowing, as of July 1, teachers will need this, so if you don't renew on time, you're going to now need this, so make sure that they get their stuff in and they get renewed, and he said, we're in a much better place this year than last year for how many teachers still need to renew, so we're, it's going really, really good. Great committee, really a great committee of teachers and staff. Masico meeting, two since our last board meeting, so both went really well, we have a great board there, and Melissa Hansen, Executive Director, is doing a really good I think, I think that's it, so.
I had a C meeting that I went to with Beth, that was before the work session, so...
It was the greatest surprise.
Yeah, it was, yeah, we saw Dr. Jeff there, so it was, it was a lot of fun, and then the work session, and then a couple of the MSBA chats, the Friday chat where they go over legislative stuff and some of the community conversation stuff, so lots of talk still with other schools about negotiations during that, so.
You didn't share that you won the $5 gift card, though.
I've won it twice.
Nice.
I don't drink coffee.
But they have other options.
And that's it.
All right, any other items? Very good, if there are no other items, we can go to 12, adjournment, so I would like a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, I'll second that motion, any discussion?
No.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, and 928. I just figured, faster with the...